Yeah.
And we are, we should be recording.
Recording in progress.
Good evening. I will call this Fairfield Plan and Zoning Commission's special meeting of June 17th to order. We will start with just a quick public service announcement in case anyone happens to be here for 1089 Churchill or 4180 Black Rock Turnpike. Those items, as indicated in the agenda, will both be tabled. So just quick heads up in case anyone was expecting those, those items will not be heard tonight. Moving to our administrative session. First item is meeting minutes. Can I have a motion on?
A motion, Mr. Chairman.
To approve?
Yes, to approve.
You do have a second? Commissioner Levy? Commissioner Harrison, any?
Yeah, thank you. Nope, they look good to me. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a vote, all in favor of the motions to approve the meeting minutes for June 10th? All in favor, the aye or raise your hand?
Aye. Mr. Chair, I think you just have to announce who's sitting for who. So Commissioner Seibert for Commissioner Braun.
And Commissioner Delgado for Commissioner Newton.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor, say aye or raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Ford, your yes? Thank you.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to old business, 441 Post Road as in the item. Here will be scheduled for executive session tomorrow, so we will not be discussing today. Does not require a vote to table since it has been noticed as such. Continuing on to our next item, 338 Commerce Drive, special exception application of Hyundai dealership pertaining to a parking lot expansion of an existing sales and service facility in the designed industrial district, the Commerce Drive area design district.
For 338 Commerce Drive, the existing Belize Hyundai dealership seeks to expand their operations by demolishing the existing commercial buildings known as 47 Haley Court, 328 Commerce Drive, and 316 Commerce Drive to the east of their two existing showroom and service buildings. Combined, the four parcels are 1,000, oh sorry, 155,381 square feet in size. The site is bounded by I-95 to the north, Haley Court to the east, and Commerce Drive to the south. The site would be improved for surface parking, car display, and an improved circulation, circulation area for onsite auto deliveries to ensure that deliveries do not occur on Commerce Drive. Instead, truck traffic would enter on Commerce Drive and exit on Haley Court. The applicant's experts have indicated that the proposed project provides onsite detention for the new pavement area where this was not previously provided by the existing three commercial buildings. Site lighting for safety purposes is provided with a request for dealership light poles at a height of 18 feet. The photometric survey demonstrates that the proposed lighting does not exceed lights, light trespass requirements. Hole and wall fixtures are shielded and directed downward per town standards. The landscaping plan provides the required shade trees per parking space requirement in the proposed parking lot development area. Existing landscape for the previously developed portion of the site remains the same. Per prior request for this property, the applicant requests a waiver from providing a sidewalk at the street frontage as the right of way is limited and the engineering department has previously indicated a crosswalk directs pedestrians to the sidewalk on the south side of Commerce Drive. There was no public comment received on this application. The relevant standard considerations for a special, special exception are as follows. Is location, type, character, and size of the use and buildings in harmony with and conform to the appropriate and orderly development of the town and neighborhood and not hinder or discourage the use of adjacent property or impair its value? Is the nature and location of the use and buildings or structures shall be such that there is adequate access for fire protection? Are the streets serving the proposed use adequate to carry prospective traffic? Is provision made for entering and leaving the property without creating undue hazard to traffic or congestion? And has adequate provision made, been made for on-street, off-street parking? And lastly, is the proposed use in compliance with the plan of conservation and development?
Thank you, Ms. Harrigan. Commissioners Ford and Seibert, are you both up to speed and prepared to vote on this?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, can I have a motion on the item? Commissioner Levy?
I'd move to approve with the conditions that we would permit the 18-foot light and also waive the sidewalk requirement.
Thank you. Do you have a second? Commissioner Seibert?
Thank you.
Commissioner Levy?
Yeah, this is a basically a modification of a special permit that we've previously approved, which was found to meet all the conditions for a special permit. In fact, this in particular allows, you know, assures that the deliveries of vehicles will now be accommodated on-site, which is a vast improvement over the prior plan. And yeah, I think under all the circumstances, meets all our requirements, it should be.
Thank you. Commissioner Seibert?
I have a second.
Any other comments? Commissioner Randolph?
I appreciate the landscaping that's gone into here, which seems to exceed requirements. It's a thoughtful, thoughtful addition to an otherwise barren landscape.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Can we put this to a vote? All those in favor of the motion to approve with the conditions as noted by Commissioner Levy? Please say aye or raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Delgado?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is a compliance application for 222 Post Road, an application of Chang-Chen to establish a 350-square-foot outdoor dining area as an accessory to an existing restaurant use for Shiki Hana in the designed commercial district.
I'm just going to speak from here if this is okay.
Yep.
Emeline Harrigan, Planning Director for the record. So Shiki Hana is a restaurant within an existing plaza. I think there was a former restaurant there, but I, to be honest, I can't remember what the name is. They are asking for outdoor dining, which is below the 400 square feet, which we allow without any additional parking. And I'm just going to show you what it looks like. So it's within the 400-foot limitation. And they have provided a picture of what their outdoor area presently looks like. And then also some examples of some other outdoor dining areas within the plaza itself. Based on where the columns are located, they're going to keep their sidewalk closer to the curb where you park and have the tables closer to the building. The configurations of the outdoor dining areas for this plaza just vary depending on where the column locations are located. So that's all I have.
Right. Can I have a motion on the item? Commissioner Levy?
I'd move to approve.
Thank you. Do you have a second? Commissioner Seibert? Commissioner Levy?
Less than 400 feet that they're entitled to basically as a right. Thoughtful plan and people enjoy outdoor dining.
Anything further, Commissioner Seibert? Any other comments from the commission? Okay, let's put this to a vote. All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye or raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Turning to our public hearings, the first item is 1089 Churchill Road. As I mentioned earlier, we will be holding this item open to next week, the 24th, at the request of staff. Continuing on to the next item, zoning, zoning regulation amendment, application of attorney Steven Bellis on behalf of contract purchasers 108 Bayrow LLC to create a new section 5.3 for a Bayrow Development District, BDD. I'll call this with the other items related to it, 108 Bayrow Street Zone Change Application of Attorney Steven Bellis on behalf of contract purchasers 108 Bayrow LLC to establish a Bayrow Development District on land presently zoned residential C. And 108 Bayrow Street zoning compliance application of attorney Steven Bellis on behalf of contract purchasers 108 Bayrow LLC pertaining to a new 100-unit residential development pursuant to section 830F of the Connecticut General Statutes, residential C-zone. Good evening, Attorney Bellis. So a recollection is last meeting we left off having heard from the architect, Mr. Geddes, and Mr. Verstig on the fire safety. I believe you have a couple more experts this evening and then one more who is not here.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
I, I don't think we were finished with the fire with Mr. Verstig.
Oh, I apologize. I thought you were. I can get him on the phone for you.
Could you do that, please?
Yeah. Yeah, I'd be glad to.
In the meantime, I think continue with the other experts for the next item, right? Okay, so.
So my plan was to have the engineer, Brian Nesteriak, testifying this evening. And Paul Richter, who's here. And then next week would be the traffic engineer. And he would also be testifying next week under the, one of the items I have later on, 1477 Congress.
And, and just for the public who is here on this item, it sounds like you are, because you're waiting for an expert who's not here, we're going to be holding the initial public applicant's presentation to next week, which means public comment on this item would not be starting till next week. So anyone who is here on this item, we're going to continue to talk about it. The presentation is not going to be complete this evening, so.
Which item, sir?
This for 108 Bayrow.
That's correct.
So we'll get through most of the rest of the application this evening. The application, initial presentation will finish next week.
Yes, sir.
Okay, continue, please.
Not a problem. Just as some housekeeping matters, Commissioner asked me for the names of the studies that mentioned about the housing crisis that testified to our legislature. So I put up an exhibit whereby ECO Northwest was one of the of people that conducted the study and the other was.
Go Northwest, I think.
Yes, and the second.
From Oregon, yep.
And the second one was the Connecticut Business and Industry Associates. Those were the two that did the studies, so I, I put them up as an exhibit. I'm not going to go over that again. One of the commissioners had some questions with the plans. So we had John Geddes, he drew some supplemental plans to show where the electrical, where the electric car stations are, an outline of the building, a little bit more clearly, it might help with some questions later. And so you'll see them under supplemental plans. I've uploaded that as an exhibit for you. And then the last thing I had as a housekeeping matter was I, I gave the case that said the guidelines do not themselves have the force of law and it was the state of Casimir Makowski. And I just uploaded the page that talked about that. So those were just housekeeping things that this commission had asked me to do and I'd be glad to do it. You can interrupt me and ask me to do anything else, no, I'll do my best.
I had a question.
Right, Commissioner Harrison?
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't want to interrupt. Who has signed off on the plan since Mr. Geddes is not a licensed architect?
So the, this, the plans are produced from his office. And there is a licensed architect in his office. So any building plans that would be submitted to the building department would have a stamp by a licensed architect. We're at a zoning hearing, so I do not have all the detailed architectural drawings that you would need for a building permit. I don't have the mechanicals and those kinds of things that you normally.
We usually do get them, so I was just, it was just a question, simple, yes or no. All right, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner enough?
I wanted, I was going to save this question for later, but Connecticut General Statu, I'm a licensed architect in New York, not Connecticut, but I've received the AIA notifications and Connecticut General Statute 20-290 says, "No person shall practice architecture in the state or use the title of architect." Now, these drawings clearly have the title of architect by someone who is not an architect. "Do not display, use any words, terms, letters, figures, title, sign, seal, advertisement to indicate that such person practices, offers to practice architecture, but not limited to the terms architectural design, architectural services, architectural drawings, unless the person has obtained a license." "Nothing in this chapter shall prevent any Connecticut corporation prior to 1933." So there is a grandfather clause in there, but assuming you were there prior to 1933.
I know.
"That no such corporation shall issue plans, specifications, or unless such plans have been signed or sealed by an architect licensed under the provisions of this chapter." This statute applies, "All plan submissions, promotional materials, professional representations, any architectural drawings, which clearly we have, specifications or related services must be prepared, signed, and sealed by a licensed architect." "Use of the protected titles or representations by unlicensed individuals or firms is prohibited and subject to enforcement." So I just want to enter that to record that this set of plans seems to be in violation of section 20-290. Commissioner Harrison raised this issue last time I looked into it and just raising that. And really questioning, I do have a number of questions subsequent to this, which raise the qualifications of the firm to make safety assessments, which are the primary responsibility of the architecture. This has nothing to do with the aesthetics, but I will be raising a number of questions, which seems to, and, and again, I'm not the architectural reviewer, but I am a licensed architect, that seem to be inconsistent with the applicable building codes.
Yeah, I'll be glad to respond to that. So under, under 8-30G, what an applicant has to produce are what we call front elevations. And we have to produce floor plans. That's what is required under the statute as far as, I will lump it under the architecture, you know, clause. We also have to have site plans. And the site plans can be either conceptual or they can be a full site plan. If it's a full site plan, as you know, then a, a PE would have to sign them. If they're not signed by a PE, they're conceptual site plans. So we are absolutely not in violation of 8-30G because all we are submitting, as I said before, are elevations and floor plans so that the commission can get a claver of what is going to be built. These are not building plans that are going to be submitted for construction. It probably says it on there, eyes aren't as good as they used to be. But generally speaking, these are not plans. They, they're plans that are stamped by the firm, Geddes Associates, Inc., with the particular architect's name on it. And it's not John Geddes who testified, it's someone from his firm. So I don't see any problem with, with the architectural plans as they are for the zoning commission. If they were going to be submitted for building purposes, that's another story. But as far as this board is concerned, all we need to do is give you the elevations and the floor plans, so you have an idea of what's going to be constructed. In this application, which leads me to my next witness, we are submitting what we call full or final site plans. So they are signed by Mr. Brian Nesteriak, who is a professional engineer. Again, we don't have to do that. They could be conceptual site plans, but for this particular application, we are giving you what I call final site plans, meaning they're signed by, they've been reviewed, signed by engineer. So unless you have another question of me now, I was going to have the engineer speak. It's up to you.
I just wanted to, since Commissioner Harrison raised that point, I just wanted to add, but I do have some additional questions, which I'll reserve.
And I'll try to bring up the code expert who's not in his office, Joe Verstig is, is a separate. Yeah, okay. Not a problem. So having said that, hopefully we clarified that, we're going to have Brian Nesteriak speak with you. He's coming live from Aruba. I hope the connection is good. And I know it's windy there because I went on my honeymoon there, I don't, you know, it was a long time ago, but Brian, can you hear us okay?
I, I can. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, so far so good. So I'll let you, I'll let you proceed.
Excellent.
Who you are and your credentials, please.
I missed that, sorry. Again, I'm Brian Nesteriak with B&amp;B Engineering, I'm a professional engineer and land surveyor. We put together the land survey and the site drawings. I'm going to focus most of my comments on the utilities, the landscaping, the lighting tonight. And then happy to answer any questions that, that anyone has. So I'll start with drainage. The existing property has zero drainage systems on-site. Basically, the water flows on the roofs and the parking lots into the surrounding areas and the roads with no organization or anything. What we've designed here is a comprehensive drainage system. Obviously, most of the property is building, so we're going to be collecting all of the drain, all the water from the roof and the surrounding areas, depositing them into a drainage system. If you want to go to the next plan, 1103, or actually it's 1201, right there, the big, big black blob there in the middle is an underground detention system that has been designed to collect any and all the stormwater from the area. It will be allowed to infiltrate into the ground. However, my design didn't calculate an infiltration and I did that as a factor of safety. It's, if it does overtop, and it will be controlled by an outlet control structure, it will slowly release that back into the Hallie Avenue storm drainage system. And the design, in accordance with the regulations with the town, it will be reduced as, as a result of, of the system. However, the existing drainage calculations are based on raw and undeveloped land. So as a result of that, there's an even higher factor of safety. So the stormwater in general will be greatly reduced as a result of the improvements that we're proposing here. In addition, the system has multiple layers of water quality treatment. So obviously, the infiltration is one thing, but we're also proposing a hydrodynamic separator at the beginning of, of the system to take out any sediments and oils and so on and so forth. Although there shouldn't be too many of those on a residential setting like this. We did receive some comments from the town engineer. It sounded like he hadn't completed his review, but most of his comments were very minor. I talked to him and all of them are very minor and we'll be able to address those once he completes what he, what he comes up with. I'm going to move on to sanitary sewer. Mr. Bellis did speak to this a meeting or two ago. We did do the typical flow monitoring in two areas that the town required. Um, we did do the typical flow monitoring uh in two areas that the town required us to do. Uh, we did this during January, March. We found the average and peak flows uh of the uh pipes that are located within the town. And we based um our proposed flows on uh public health guidelines. We added it all together and we found that the pipes had ample capacity. Um, that being said, we all know that W B C did deny us and they said they didn't have capacity. Um, however, we used uh their data. To determine uh what the capacity would be. Um, since then, uh we've had uh two different studies. Um, uh survey of the area that determined that the data that they provided us was a little inaccurate. Um, so we reran the the numbers uh and instead of it being, I think it's eighty-one percent of the capacity. Um, it's seventy percent of the capacity. And then um another third-party engineer provided a full three D hydraulic analysis. And that dropped it down to fifty percent capacity. I'm throwing a lot of numbers at you. Uh, I'm basically just telling you um that the uh the system does have ample capacity for the very small. Uh, increase that um would be proposed as part of this project. Uh, Mr. Bellis uh did say that uh we are appealing and reapplying to the commission and and we do think that uh we'll be able to show that. Um, the the system can be absorbed. I'll move on to water uh very quickly. Um, same estimates of how much um water would be needed. Both for domestic and fire flows uh for this building. Uh, we did do a uh hydrant fire flow test in the area. And the short of it is that Aquarian has uh confirmed that uh they can provide ample water. For uh both domestic and the fire flows needed for this project. Um, for landscaping, we did prepare a landscaping plan. Um, it's in the in the uh submission that we provided for you. Um, we put together some uh ornamental and deciduous uh design near the entrances. Um, we also proposed uh some larger evergreen trees around the building to to attempt to to soften the appearance of the of. Of of this building. Um, we did get some comments during the code review. Um, mainly street trees and a handful of other things. We did revise the plans to um include all of those. Comments and we did um provide that as part of this latest submission. And then the last thing I'm gonna bring up is that there is a lighting plan um that was put together by uh a lighting consultant. Um, mainly all the lighting proposed is indoors, um but the analysis did um. Did provide uh the readings all the way around the property. Um, it was designed to keep uh all the light levels uh within the property line. As part of that, um and as a additional factor of safety, uh a fence was proposed along the property line. Um, just to to cut off any potential light that might spill over. But the analysis did say that it it does comply with the requirements of of the regulations. Uh, I will leave it at that, uh and I'd be happy to answer any questions that uh the commission has.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Randolph.
Um, so I I'm gonna be addressing my questions to your set that's stamped. I think it's dated uh. I can't really read the date, but um starts with uh zero one zero one and that's that's your set, correct?
I think that's the cover sheet you're talking about, yes.
So, so I guess starting with um. Well, um, who who's responsible for the overall site configuration? I'm hearing there's an architect, I'm hearing there's, I'm sorry, there's a designer, there's an architect in the office, there's a fire expert, there's an engineer. Who's responsible for the overall, I'll just say, site layout? Is that, I I see it on your plans. Is that your responsibility?
Well, I I think the answer is that uh this is a team effort and everybody has kind of put in and and we've worked together to. Come up with the the various set of plans that that you see before you.
I'm I'm, I understand you work together, but who has the ult, is a licensed professional, who has the ultimate accountability for the site plan?
Well, it's my plan and I've stamped it. So I guess for the site plan that you're seeing as part of my set, that is my responsibility.
Okay, so I guess um so this is a fire-related question. Well, also, I'll go through the the set sequentially and then so. Uh, on zero three zero one.
That's a survey?
Um, it's the the only, is that the best? I guess I'll go to zero, uh I'm sorry, eleven oh one. That's the the overall site plan.
Okay.
Okay, so um.
Want me to share that?
Yeah, if you could. Um, according to um I F C five oh three point two point five, appendix D. There's a definition of a dead-end fire turnaround. Are you familiar with that regulation?
Not particularly, no.
Uh, but this is your set, right? So you said you're responsible for the site plan?
Sure.
So, um, well, this is a little concerning then, because um so a dead-end turnaround, uh picture a cul-de-sac. You know, any street that's longer than a hundred and fifty feet has to have a turnaround, right?
Any street uh more than a hundred feet needs a turnaround? Is that what you said?
According to, uh according to code.
Okay.
So anything that's longer than a hundred and fifty feet has to have um one of three types of turnarounds. It's gotta have a, and I've I've submitted these to the fire department. It's gotta have a cul-de-sac, a Y. Um, side space, kind of like a railroad siding, T or um a hammerhead. Um, and the the dimension, the depth of your of um. Uh, Bayrow Street is approximately two hundred and seventy-five feet. The depth of um Haley Street is three hundred and thirty-seven feet. Can you show me where the turnarounds are for those?
That's town property, so it's off-site, off-site and it's not part of this project, so I'm not sure how we can. Make those compliant.
Well, the 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 school had, uh uh the school's dotted in there. And there was a way to basically pass by the building uh rather than backing out. So the school complied with this because they had a pass-through. You can see the school dotted in on eleven oh three and that's how they solved this. Wasn't a dead end, but you've got two dead ends on your fire access. Um, and as the engineer who's the licensed um party, I, you know, I'm asking this question to you. And if you guys can come back and tell me the answer to this, I've submitted this to the fire marshal as well. So that's my question one, and it sounds like you don't have an answer for me right now. And I am kind of dropping this on you, so uh I just ask that you look at it and I can give you uh the the specific citations. So um, yeah, so basically the code says a fire apparatus access road has to comply. Uh, and have a turnaround. And this is just to re- read this, it's I F C five oh three point two point five. An appendix D is in David one oh three point four. And it says, while the code doesn't specify a maximum reversing distance, interpretive guidance. Uh, commentary to I F C discourages the need to reverse more than a single apparatus length. That's why you see cul-de-sacs. Um, uh, and so either the road needs to be wi- widened or a cul-de-sac needs to be in there in my. Semi-amateurist interpretation of the code here. I used to do this professionally, but I haven't done that for three years. Um, s- so um, I guess the second question is, if you could go to. I guess it's eleven oh one again. And you've got some dimensions shown in there. Um, they're pretty hard to see, but it's up by where the ramp is. And that's the setback width from the the building from the property line on the, I'll say, the plan uh west side.
Are you still on the site plan?
I'm on eleven oh one.
Down.
Yeah, that that one.
There you go.
Yeah, eleven oh one. So if you zoom in, really see where the, if you see the rectangle in the upper left, there's a dimension, yeah, right? Right, there's a dimension right there. Would you?
Four point four feet.
Four feet, four feet, four inches, I believe, but.
Uh, uh, it's a little more than four inches.
Okay, so you you use metric?
No, no, it's ten. It's a tenth of a foot, four point four feet.
Okay, um, so a- and then there's another dimension back. Uh, so what what does that dimension indicate?
The four point four? I'm sorry, the four point four feet?
Yes, what does that dimension indicate?
That is the dimension from the outside of the wall to the ramp that goes to the second floor parking area to the property line.
To the property line, right. So that's the setback of the building?
Uh, yes.
Okay, and so there's another dimension and um, so so you're using fractions of feet? So four point four, it's not four, four, um.
It's four point four feet.
Okay.
Four feet and point four feet.
Yeah, so if you scroll up over, Miss Harrigan.
Towards the southern part of the building?
Show the bottom of the building a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah, stop right there. So where the, there's another, where it says pedestrian path to Bayrow Street. There's a dimension just to the right of that. And that's, it says, I think, five six or five point six or five, five six.
Five six.
Yeah, correct?
Five point six feet, correct.
And then um in the upper right-hand corner, and again, that's the building setback.
That is the distance that the proposed building will be from the property line.
Right, so it's a building setback. Um, and then on the upper right-hand corner where it says remove existing stairs. Go up, uh Miss Harrigan, to the upper right of the drawing.
Alright.
Yeah, so the setback, yeah, right in the upper right there where it says remove existing stairs, just to the south of that. There's a dimension in there and I believe it's uh six foot two inches or six point two.
Correct.
Yeah, so those are the setbacks of the building from the property line, correct?
Correct.
Um, so I just want to confirm that I was reading that drawing correctly. Um, and so then um. Going to um, uh and and so this is gonna, I I guess lead into a question over. Combustibility of the exterior of the building. Uh, so I don't know if, who I should ask that question to.
I I I'm gonna ring up Joe Verstig for you.
It's an architectural question. It's not a, it's a, it's a constructibility question. It's not an egress question, so. So it'd be your architect who would normally have that information, so.
But you can ask the question and I'll get you your answer.
Oh, okay, so um what percentage of a building is permitted to have? Well, what's the combust- combustibility rating of a building that's less than ten feet from the property line? That's the question. And then the question is, what percentage of opening can you have in a building that's less than ten feet from the property line? According to the applicable code standards. And the the answer is ten percent. So according to my reading of the code, but again, I'm not a license, I'm not licensed in Connecticut, I'm licensed in New York. But um and that there is a national code that states this.
So I'm clear on when I asked the question, what code are you referring to? I I know you said dot code.
So I B C. Um, so we're, just to, just to confirm, we're four foot four, four six and five six from the perimeter. We're less than ten feet at all those instances, correct?
Do you want me to bring it back up?
No, no, I'm just, I we, I'm just confirming what we just discussed.
It sounds like you are correct.
Yeah, um, so, um. These are all kind of fire-related questions, but normally an architect would answer these. Um, so let's see. Um, access route and coverage, so in um. The code, it says that fire apparatus access roads and walking paths be unobstructed and designed to support emergency operations. Around the building. So if I go to um, uh, let's see here, it's drawing. Uh, eighteen oh one, which is the landscape plan. You go to eighteen oh one?
I'm getting there.
Okay, sorry.
You wanna be able to see the whole thing or just?
That's good. I mean, it's easier to zoom in. So um, can you just clarify, because a lot of people here are. Look at drawings all the time. What are what are those black dots?
Uh, they're they're all a variety of different uh types of of landscaping that we proposed. When the, when it's printed out on a full-size sheet, it doesn't look quite as dark as it it shows on this.
So I I I just read, and I I know you're not a an architect, um but under the code. Um, it requires that fire access routes and walking paths be unobstructed and designed to support emergency operations. So we just said that that was about four feet, four and a half feet right there. And in your professional opinion, are those routes obstructed? Or unobstructed?
Um, I think they can be unobstructed if they're if they're maintained properly.
So you you, walking around trees is unobstructed?
It can be, yes, if they're trimmed properly.
Okay, so um, um, so according to I F C five oh three one one, it says. It doesn't specify a minimum walking route, but six feet is typically needed for hose advancement and firefight movement. So if you're a firefighter. Bringing a hose through there is, would that be feasible in your professional opinion?
I I don't think that's an an, that's a question for me.
Well, um, okay. And then um what's the grade difference between Finn Street and um uh Bayrow? I I didn't see any topos on here or elevations.
No, it's on the grading plan. Um, that'd be twelve oh one. What was it between Finn and Bayrow? Is that what you asked?
Yeah, yeah.
It's about thirty feet, a little less than thirty feet.
There's a thirty-foot difference between Finn and Bayrow and a five-foot uh passage with trees in it. Um, or that that's supposed to assure fire safety going between there. I'm just trying to understand the drawing. You have thirty-foot drop, you've got a five-foot passage and you've got trees in the middle and you're supposed to maintain an unobstructed fire route. For a fireman to carry a hose through there.
Again, I think these are answer, these are questions for uh Mr. Verstig.
No, this is the question, this is a, these are architecture questions and you're the s- licensed professional, so I'm asking you.
I'm not an architect.
Well, I I know, but you're stamping in the drawing on behalf of the architect, so.
I'm not stamping anything on behalf of the architect.
Okay.
I think um if you give me these questions, I've been writing them down. I have no problem getting written answers to these.
Yeah.
I've been trying to write them down, so I think I have them.
The the fire marshal's getting these, so.
Well, I'll get them too for you.
Okay, um, uh, and then uh the ramp. Um, so can you explain that, the and and again, people aren't used to look at drawings, that that square on the upper left? Wh- which is the best um drawing to look at the the parking ramp? Is it this one?
Probably the architectural drawings, but.
Um, maybe the supplemental plan um uh M line that I submitted would show the parking ramps.
Let me get there.
Just trying to help.
Picture plan supplemental, that one.
Yeah, try that. I'm not quite sure your question, but I think that shows it better.
It doesn't show the the ramp.
That's the lower barrage?
Oh, that one doesn't, oh, it's here.
Level, and then this is the ramp level.
Yeah, I think it's um eight two. So wha- what's the slope of that ramp?
Ten percent.
Okay, and what's the um, did did you design that ramp?
No, I did not.
Um, who 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 should I be addressing this question to then?
I would think it'd be Mr. Getz.
Okay, so um, yeah, I'm just gonna put in the record and again, I got this, this is, I'm just giving you a heads up on what question is. Um, uh, ramps are supposed to be eight percent. Hold on, let me get to the right. Uh, according to um I B C, um. A ramp and 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 it's four oh six, I think two point five and four oh six point three point five. Ramp shall not exceed one in fifteen, which is six point six seven percent, unless designated solely for vehicular uh traffic. Now, I, since there's no way to walk along the side of this building, I would assume that people are, will find their way on that ramp. Um, so ramp ten percent is significantly steeper. It's one in ten. Uh, one in fifteen is what the code says, the building code, which my understanding is eight thirty Gs are not exempt from the building code, correct?
Um, so eight thirty Gs um are, uh, the. Uh, applicant is allowed to make uh reasonable changes as suggested by the commission to ma- to make.
Zoning.
Zoning, yes.
Not building.
Zoning commission.
Building code, yeah.
Yeah, no, the building code, the building code is something that um would be submitted when you have your building plans. And you go to the building department after you have your zoning approval.
Right, but we.
And those plans go to the um, uh, would be inspected by the um building official in town, not the zoning.
I'm just a little puzzled then why we're seeing plans at all.
Why you're seeing plans? Because they're supposed to help the commission in making their determination as to whether um. What it is that they're approving as far as um, uh. How many units, where the affordable units are, the kind of layout of where the parking is, that's what, that's what the case law says. So you have a familiarity of, of kind of what the project looks like. It's not. Um, these are not, I tried to say that before, these are not building drawings that would be submitting to the building department. Those, sometimes they have to be um stamped by structural engineers. Sometimes they're um. They're just different. It's a different level of scrutiny.
Right, but the, the information here is supposed to indicate the general safety of the building, correct?
It's supposed to give you the general layout of the building, and if there's any concerns that a commission may have as to safety. We're allowed to listen to you and make those reasonable changes. So I'm, I'm not an architect and I'm not an engineer. Um, but for instance, if you felt, if you felt, I'm not suggesting you, you are, but if you felt that the ramp. Um, instead of being ten percent, should be eight percent, that could be something that you should say. If you can make your ramp eight percent, that would help with a safety issue, and and if we say, yes, we can do it, then that solves that problem.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm pointing out that the ten percent ramp is a safety issue. And that the perimeter, the building close to the perimeter is a clear safety issue related to fire. Uh, the dead ends or the two roads are a clear safety issue.
So I will try to get you answers on that.
In my, in my, not my professional opinion, but I used to do this professionally.
Yeah.
And intuitively, there's a lot of issues here, and uh the fire, the fire marshal will be looking at this more specifically, but I'm raising these now.
Yeah, just so you know, I think we did go to a code, uh, uh, code compliance.
It's concerning.
But they're, they're, those are non-binding.
Oh, I understand, but they were given and to the fire marshal. We're not trying to hide the ball on anybody here. We, we did everything that we should have done.
Yeah, well, just one, one last thing. I guess my, my concern is that I worked in urban settings in my career, and it's thirty years ago. I worked in.
That's right, I'm sure you still remember.
I worked in Philly.
Yeah.
Um, I worked in urban settings.
Yeah.
Our fire commissioner is not, doesn't ha- our fire marshal does not have a lot of experience working, this is an urban building. This is an urban scale building. Um, he doesn't have a lot of experience, and so I would, I'm highlighting this based upon my experience.
Yeah.
As issues that raise grave, grave safety concerns.
Well, I, I don't know if they do or don't.
But I'm just saying they raise great.
But I can get you the answers, and if, if they, if they, um, two things, one, they may not violate the codes. I'm not sure, cause I'm not an expert. Uh, number two, if, if there is any concern with these codes. There could be perhaps changes made to the plans that would accommodate that. That's what I'm suggesting. And it's a process where we work with one another. Um, you know, if you have, you point something out and we can address it and fix it. Um, that's my job.
Commissioner Harrison?
No, I, I just want to say I do appreciate Commissioner Randolph's great technical expertise. Um, it, it's obviously a big help, especially with this. Uh, uh, with attorney bells, I'm just confused, like, our job here as a commission is to protect public health and safety as well as to. You know, ensure our regulations are fully implemented. Um, so. I, I just want to be clear, are we seeing all the plans? Like, what, I, I'm just, I'm a little confused by some of the, your statements tonight.
Yeah, well, I, I'm not sure that I'm confusing. Um, I don't have to follow your regulations because under eight thirty G. Your local zoning regulations are not applicable in all context.
But, but the, but public health and safety, yes, and other, yes.
Oh, a hundred percent agree on that. Um, have you, your question to me was, have you seen all the plans? The answer is yes. And uh the plans that we are to provide to the commission are, are, are spelled out in eight thirty G. And I think I've said it a few times. Um, you only need to give uh elevations, you only need to give floor plans. And you need to give either a conceptual site plan or a full site plan, depending on the type of application that you're applying for. Um, so there are no other plans um other than what we have submitted, and those were all given to the town. Oh, I don't know, perhaps a month ago, I don't remember the date, uh, under the code review, comments were made. And um as part of those um code review comments, some of the plans were adjusted accordingly. But you have the final set.
Right, and the code review, it, look, it's non-binding, it's done, you know, we don't, we, we, you know, we don't even get those really in advance until we get the entire application.
Yeah.
So, but I, I don't know, I'm, I'm just, um, may- maybe I'm just interpreting some of your comments a bit differently than what they were intended to be. Um.
What I was explaining was that you're not going to get a designed building that would be submitted to the building. Um, official for construction. There's a difference between construction drawings. And uh zoning drawings. Okay, that's what, that was my distinction.
So are you saying they will change once they get to that? I guess that, that, uh, you know, that place in the journey of building, I, I, will they change? I just want to understand that.
Oh, I'm, I don't know whether they would radically change. There might be some small minor changes. Um. But basically, what those plans are, uh, they're usually reviewed by, as I said before, structural engineers. Who will lay out the uh amount of steel, the location of the piers, uh, the, the type of concrete. All those sorts of things for building a building to make it structurally sound. Um, that's, that's different than the review process here, which is, do we need affordable housing? Is this site appropriate for affordable housing? And can you put an apartment building on this site? And those questions, I think, are clearly yes.
Okay.
Uh, any other questions for Mr. Nesteriak before? Please continue.
Yeah, so um, uh, the commissioner had asked if I can ring up uh Joe Verstig, and I, I think I have, I don't know how to. I'm, I'm confused with the technology. I don't know who lets him in.
See, uh, is he in the waiting room?
I don't see him.
Did he, did he call in?
Yeah, he called in.
Is it eight, six, zero, four, eight, zero, three, nine, five, one?
Mr. Verstig, if you, if you're on the.
I guess that's the right number.
By phone, it's, it's on your phone.
It says star six to unmute.
Please press star six to unmute yourself and let us know that you're here. Mr. Verstig, if you're with us by phone, please press star six to unmute yourself. Do you have another expert lined up in the meantime?
Uh, I can have a, um, all.
There we go. Mr. Verstig?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Randolph. Mr. Verstig, um, thanks for, for joining us. Um. Is the IBC an area of your expertise?
Yes.
Okay, so um, we're, we're, right now, is it twenty twenty one? Is that what applies in Connecticut, the International Building Code?
The twenty, the twenty, uh, two thousand and twenty two Connecticut State Building Code. Uses the two thousand twenty one IBC with amendments and deletions.
Okay.
So, your IBC.
Right, so um, under section seven oh five point eight and six oh two, it says a, a fire separation distance of four feet. Um, applies for fully sprinkler buildings, is that correct?
Say that again, please.
Or, there's gotta be a four foot separation between the property line and the building setback, is that correct?
Correct.
So, um, could you walk us through the um maximum? Um, opening size as a percentage of the wall area?
You have me at a loss because I don't have the document in front of me. Um, I'm at a remote location. But you are correct, the exterior wall of a building is a function of the type of construction. Um, and I believe in this building, it's type um. Um, three B, which means that the exterior walls automatically have to have a two hour fire resistance rating. And that satisfies six oh one and seven oh five five. And then the percentage of window openings is based on a, a table of seven oh five eight. And it's a combination of the percentage at a given story, and whether the windows are protected. Meaning they have a fire resistance rating to them, uh, or they're unprotected, which means they're normal windows, and the building is sprinkled. So you, there are percentages per story, per wall, uh, of what you'd be allowed to have. And I, like I said, I don't have that document in front of me now.
Yeah, my, my reading is that it's fifteen percent. Is that possibly correct?
Okay.
And, and so the architectural plans, uh, and again, you're, I don't know if you have access to them?
No, I have nothing, other than the cell phone right now.
Okay, uh, the architectural plans, you can just show a much larger percentage, looking at um. Emmeline, if you could open up um. I guess it's one oh two Bayrow Architectural Plans dot PDF.
You have a sheet number?
Yes, it's sheet number A nine. It starts with A nine. Um. A ten.
Have the elevations.
Yeah, the elevation, yes.
I don't, I don't think that he can look. I think he's just on the audio phone.
Okay, well, yeah, so if you go to um east elevation, which is um. Guess it's uh. I think, I, I think it's A eleven.
That should be west, that should be east. Nope, that's south.
But I, I don't see any indication, I mean, it looks. The, I don't know, guestimate eye, that looks like it's way more than ten percent of openings there.
Oh, like you're looking at, cause he can't.
Oh, oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm looking at A eleven elevation. So who would be, it's, that's something the architect would usually review, correct?
Yeah, I'll have an architect give you an answer.
Okay.
The, the question has to do with looking at the elevation percentage.
Percentage of opening, it doesn't seem to, doesn't seem to comply with the uh fire code.
Understood.
Um, all right, so Mr. Verstig, I'll get back to your, your swim lane here on a. Uh, let's see. Um, ground ladder operation clearance. Um, I think you're probably, I, I would bet you're an expert on this one.
What was the topic?
Ground ladder and operational clearance.
Okay.
Um, so right now, best practice, in my reading of the code. Um, is for deploying ground ladders to a seventy five foot building would require a nine to twenty five feet of horizontal clearance. Based on NFPA nineteen oh one. Which is basically, it says one fourth the working height is a safe base distance from the proper ladder angle. So we've got setbacks of four foot four, we just heard from the engineer, six foot two. And five foot six going up to a seventy two foot building.
Right.
Does that concern you?
No, not at all, because you're not gonna do ground ladders on this building. Uh, all of your fire department operations are through the interior stairs and up the stairs onto the fire floor.
I, I'm just reading the code, NFPA nineteen oh one, uh, and it says if the.
Yeah, which is, which, I understand nineteen oh one, and it's a guidance on ladder operations.
Yeah.
But the code doesn't require compliance with nineteen oh one, nor does it reference it.
Um, so Connecticut doesn't recognize nineteen oh one?
No, not from building code or fire, so perspective, no.
So as a standard though, cause it says, I don't know, my reading of it, it says is aerial access is restricted. There need to be mitigation sta- strategies, and you educated us last time at stair on, on um, this fire, fire on the uh sprinklers. Um, is there stair pressurization in this building?
No, it's a non-high rise building.
Right, but it's a mitig- that would be a mitigating factor, wouldn't it?
Mitigating for what?
For a lack of access because the fire, because the ladder can't get up the side of the building. And I'm just reading from the code on mitigating factors.
Well, you're, you're reading from nineteen oh one, which is a non-adoption standard. So it's interesting reading, but it has no bearing. Just like we talked last week about NFPA seventeen ten. It's interesting reading, but it has no bearing on from a code application.
So that the guidance, in the event of a lawsuit, would have no bearing if there was a catastrophic event. That you built a building that was four feet. Four inches away from the side and you couldn't put a ladder up, and it was, you couldn't get there, that said it would have no bearing, cause you complied with the code?
Not what I said. The question you just asked about bearing in a legal matter is a matter for attorneys to argue before a judicial. Sports system.
So I'm reading also, it says, recognize that stampede system provides, provides interior coverage, which you addressed last time. Does not eliminate the need for exterior access under IFC five oh three one one. So is IFC five oh three one one not applicable as well?
Are you reading from the Connecticut Fire Safety Code Part Three or the two thousand and twenty one International Fire Code?
The IFC.
Yeah, all that's been stripped out and replaced with NFPA verbiage.
So, but it's, provides guidance that says, can any portion of exterior access be modified under specific conditions? For, for alternate use and means?
Well, this is pretty clear. Connecticut State Fire Marshals, the Connecticut Fire Marshals Association. The members of the international, of the Connecticut Fire Chiefs Association, along with the codes and standards committee. Uh, along with the state legislature that adopted. The um Connecticut Fire Safety Code Part Three specifically took section five oh three from the IAC. Uh, appendix D from the IFC and deleted it and replaced it with different verbiage.
Okay, well, I, I'm giving these to the fire marshal, so I'm just giving you a heads up that he, you guys will need to address that. Um, so.
He'll, he'll go to look at.
Yeah, so my, my question really is an intuitive one, and that's. Uh, this perimeter, and you weren't here earlier, but there's a four foot four setback on the.
Find what's possible, Lexis.
On the plan, um, west side, six foot two on the plan east side, and then um. Five foot six on the plan south side, uh, and there's, doesn't seem to be a safe means to get around the building. Um, and so I'm just raising that as a concern, a question. I'm not asking you to. Uh, answer that right now, but I'm giving you a heads up that I raised this with the fire marshal.
Sure, then feel free to opine why you think it's unsafe, we can respond.
Yeah, cause it would seem that there's no way to get around the building. That, that's my concern. There's no way to get around the building, and there's a thirty foot elevation difference between the. The, the uh north side of the building and the south side of the building. That's, that's, and I'm just looking at this as a non-practicing architect. Um, okay, I'm almost done here. Um, perimeter landscaping, um, I raised this question earlier, there's a fair amount of perimeter landscaping that is in that very narrow space. Um. And there's not, doesn't seem to be a clear walking route around the building, so I'm just raising that as an issue that needs to be addressed. Um, talked about ground ladders. Um. Think that, oh, an exterior, um, exterior firewall rating, we talked about that already, so that's. Fire hose you with my question, so. Any other questions for Mr. Verstig?
Commissioner Levy.
Mr. Verstig, on the supplemental plans who are submitted, uh, they show a fire lane, it appears to be on Finn Street, is that correct? You know?
Okay.
Uh, my question is, is it on Finn Street or is it just along the northern side of the building? And if so, is it an existing fire lane, or does that still have to be uh, uh, approved by another body?
Well, there's the um, and I don't have the street names off the top of my head, I haven't looked at the plans in the, in a week, sorry. Um, there's the fire department vehicle access at the front of the building, if you call the front. Um, I believe that's Bayrow Street. And then there are two side roads that come up on either side of the building at the parking garage, um, end of the building. Those are existing roadways. Um. And there was discussion about a hundred and fifty foot dead end. Um, if the fire truck has to drive in more than one hundred and fifty feet. To satisfy the requirement of reaching the exterior door uh within fifty feet, then yes, the one hundred and fifty foot dead end would apply. You'd have to be able to provide a, a turnaround. Those two side streets on either side by. Those two side streets on either side by the garage, it's not required that the trucks drive in more than one hundred and fifty feet to satisfy the code requirement. If the fire truck at the front door with the front lobby is satisfies the building entry requirement. So although those side streets are longer, it's not required that there be turnarounds because there's no requirement for the truck to go in more than one hundred and fifty feet.
Uh, now Finn Street is the one that's about thirty feet higher than, uh, Barrow and Haley. Um.
Okay.
So my question is, why would there be a fire lane up there or, or is that, is that part of the plan?
Yeah, it just showed that there's fire department vehicle access up to the, both sides of the building, uh, in addition to across the front.
And is that currently designated as a fire lane, if you know?
Uh, it could be through signage.
Thank you.
Commissioner Randolph.
Yeah, just, just to follow up. So you're saying if you're on Finn Street with the fire truck. And the back of the building is on fire. You're going to access it through Finn Street. Is that what you're suggesting?
No, no. Typically, the response is going to be for the residential portion. It can be at the front of the building. You only have to reach an exterior door within fifty feet. Once you've done that, you've satisfied the code requirements.
So the south side of the building is on fire, you're going to reach it through the front door?
No, you only have to access it by one door to the exterior within fifty feet. Certainly if there's a fire on the south side, I'm assuming. South side not being able to look at the plans to get a, a reference, you're talking on the garage side?
No, there's residential in the back.
Okay. Then you would, you could go up that stairway or you could go up the front stairway.
But so that's, that's a hundred, that's a four hundred and fifty foot distance from. The two dead ends there. Um. Yeah, it's three thirty-seven, I'm sorry, three thirty-seven to the dead end on, um, Haley and then, um. Two seventy-five on Biro. So that is greater than a hundred and fifty feet, correct?
Well, you're asking very specifics. As I said, I don't have a plan in front of me, so we'll, we'll address that as one of your questions and provide a response if that's acceptable.
Of course.
Uh, Attorney Bellas, one thing I'd like you to address, I'll defer to you on which of the experts is the right one to, uh, speak to this, but the. Uh, you know, the issue of asbestos on the current site, I know that's something I, I saw at least, uh, an email about that from. One of the neighbors and had the same thoughts. Is there, um, has the existing building been looked at? Um, and assessed for the presence of asbestos? And if so, is there any remediation plan in place?
Yes, I'm.
Servants of that.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Go ahead.
The answer is yes to both questions. Um, there's been, uh. Study done, um, by an independent third party asbestos company. Um, and, uh, there's been a plan how to remove it in the cost room.
And does someone have to sign off on that plan other than this commission?
Not sure. This commission has to sign off.
Well, we have to sign off on the, the whole thing and.
Yeah.
Public health and safety is.
I do, I do have that plan and I can certainly submit it to you, um, for your consideration. I think that. To answer your question, I, I think it goes to the, uh, building department to approve it. In order for, before anyone can go step into that building and start removing it. Um, so. That's where it goes. It usually goes to the building department, but there is a plan and I don't mind sharing if, if I know.
No, I'm not offering any advice. I'm just.
It's okay.
Flexibly responding, sorry.
Yeah, that's all right. Yeah, that, um, I'll get you the plan. And, uh, again, i- i- it's very common, um, in, uh, older buildings where they have, you know, you, you have someone come and do testing. And then they, they, they tell you where, where the asbestos is, and then they have a private company take the asbestos out. Uh, and remove it and take it off-site depending on what, you know. And they take it someplace that, um, accepts asbestos, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I can get you that plan.
Please, thank you.
Do you have another?
Yes, another witness, yeah. I wasn't sure if you were done. Uh, I'd like to call, uh, Paul Richter. Paul?
Good evening, I'm Paul Richter, a member of one oh eight Biro LLC. Contract purchaser for one oh eight Biro Street. Attorney Bellas asked me to speak briefly about the financial viability of a housing development like the one we're proposing. And to your question, Mr. Chairman. Development's unique and expensive because the existing school building must be demolished before construction can start. The asbestos removal demolition costs are estimated at about a half million dollars. Uh, there was an asbestos survey done and there was a plan of remediation also done by, uh, a licensed contractor. Um, you know, in addition, the thirty, uh, restricted units required under this eight thirty G proposal will produce. A projected loss of, uh, just under a hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars each year. For over seven million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars over the forty years for which they are deed restricted. This loss can only be offset by the income generated by the remaining seventy market rate units. And we estimate a return on our equity investment in this project to be about four percent, which. I don't think is unreasonable, given the risk involved. I'd also like to point out that this school building is currently off the tax rolls. And the proposed housing development, uh, should generate, based on other apartments in the area, somewhere between thirty-five hundred and four thousand dollars. Uh, in taxes per unit per year. So the economic benefits of the town would be three hundred and fifty thousand to four hundred thousand dollars. We believe housing of this kind is needed in this location specifically, and the town could certainly use the tax revenue and ask that you vote to approve it.
Thank you. Any questions?
I, I have a question.
Or, uh, Levy and then Harrison.
Yeah, in, uh, coming up with your four percent return, what number did you use for the total expense for the project?
It's over thirty million dollars.
And what revenue do you expect, uh, on a yearly basis?
On the total?
Yes.
I don't have the, off the top of my head, but we have a spreadsheet that, you know, takes into account all of the income limits as well as the deductions for. The state's, uh, utility schedule. When you need restricted units and then the other units we used, uh, as comparables. Uh, trademark project and the, uh, auto project.
Well, when you figured the, uh, seven million or the loss of a hundred and ninety-four thousand a year, uh, I assume that's based upon a market rent per unit?
No, that's based on the restricted rent, right?
The restricted rent on a yearly basis for the thirty percent would be a hundred and ninety-four thousand less than market rent, correct?
Correct. That would be our loss on each, on, for the year for those thirty affordable units.
Right.
Correct.
So the question is, what would the total rental be? I mean, you obviously had to figure what the market rent was to calculate the loss. So what market rent do you expect on these units?
The one bedrooms, I believe we were anticipating about twen, market rate twenty-five hundred and the two bedrooms, uh, if I'm not mistaken, thirty-four hundred.
Commissioner, thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Harrison?
Yeah, um, thank you. Um, and thank you, Mr. Richter, for being here. Um, I, I know that you have obviously a very long history in real estate here in Fairfield. So I had a question. You said this area of town needs more affordable housing. Can you elaborate on that?
Well, there's, this commission and the town as a whole, I believe, is trying to, uh, encourage development around. Uh, transportation hubs, the trains, the new train station is less than a half a mile away. Uh, I ninety-five Black Rock Turnpike exit is, uh, in between this project and the, uh, the train station. And, uh, my understanding is that there's, uh, desire to redevelop or rejuvenate the King's Highway corridor, which is right where we are.
Yeah, so, okay. I mean, it's, it's, I mean, I would say it's probably not an easy walk to the metro center, but hey, some people like to walk more than others. I, I guess one, one thing that, look, I, I know land is finite, especially in Fairfield where we're pretty dense already. But I guess my, my issue here, and, and this is not really directed at you or this parcel land, but the concentration of affordable housing in Fairfield. Is really in this area of town. And I don't believe it was ever the public policy of the state legislature when they adopted eight three G to have it concentrate in one area of town. And I realize land is cheaper. It's possibly more available. Um. Uh, but I, I do think it already exists on the east side of town. Um, so maybe this is more of a statement and commentary, um, but those are, those are just my thoughts. I, I do think we've done a great job of. Of, of creating a diversity of housing in Fairfield and something that this commission has recognized for a long time. Um, we, I agree with you that we certainly want to build out and rebuild that area of King's Highway. Um, I, I'm just mindful, I guess, sometimes of just getting all the affordable housing in one section of town. Um, anyway, thank you. Thank you for providing your thoughts. And, and I get that these projects do have to pencil out. I mean, the developer is for profit. I appreciate that, so, um. Anyway, I will, I will stop there. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for Mr. Richter?
Yeah, I ran off. Mr. Richter, um. Um, I do, um, support the need for affordable housing. Um, any thirty G is a blunt force tool that is being wielded against our town because we don't have enough blunt force housing and it's the law. So I get it. And the, 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 um. Our obligation is to make sure this is a safe, a safe building. Um. It's a hundred percent lot coverage here practically. It's close to, close to a hundred percent lot coverage. Um, on a very difficult parcel with a big grade change, two dead ends. Um, had you considered a smaller building?
We did, but you know, the, uh, one of the problems is that no matter, we still would have to build the two-level parking garage. So if you reduce the cost of, you reduce the number of units and you're spreading, you're still, you're spreading a fixed cost over less units. It makes the project economically, uh, not viable.
So the parking garage and the parking requirements are re, what's our parking ratio, one point two five here?
Sorry. Yeah, a little more than that. I can get you that answer.
So the parking garage is what's driving this?
Just to answer your question, I don't, is the lower garage level had eighty-eight spaces and the upper one had seventy-nine?
Yeah, that is a factor as well as the, you know, demolition of the existing building with, which as you pointed out, Mr. Chairman, it's, it has asbestos and. That also needs to be remediated. For the building department will sign off on the demolition permit.
Um, yeah, I guess I'm just asking whether you'd consider a smaller building because this building is. Over seventy feet tall, a thirty-foot grade change. It's, um. It's the only building that's similar in scale is probably the Save the Children Office Building down the road. There's really nothing even comparable. Um, this side of town, it's, it's gotta be the, it's gonna be the largest structure other than some of the eight thirty Gs we just, we. Were forced to approve up on at forty-four eighty. So, um, I'm just. I, I guess you have considered it. It sounds like the parking garage is a big driver. Um, as you know, we've been very adaptable on parking. It's a commission, but the scale of this thing is, it, I, I'm not sure this thing is going to be, you know, the, the, I raised a number of. Safety issues here based upon the lot coverage, which is very high, so. I don't want to be questioned, so.
But that's why we hired the experts that we've hired.
I, I'm questioning your expert's ability as, as I did earlier. Uh, and I've got everything written down, but, um, this is an urban building designed by somebody who's used to designing. Non-urban buildings, it, 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 a smaller building is more appropriate to the site. And again, I'm pontificating and not asking you a question, so.
Well, I'll, I'll ask a question based on that. Structured parking is much more expensive than surface parking. This is structured parking, uh, and so have you considered a way to reduce the footprints of the building? In part to address some of the many, uh, safety concerns that have been raised here. Uh, by reducing structured parking. Uh, given that you're over, uh. Providing more parking than, uh, I, I'm not going to say more parking than needed is subjective, but more parking than. As, uh, buildings have been approved with a lower parking ratio.
I understand the thrust of your question, uh, and I guess Paul and I will talk about that, get back to you next meeting. Um. I, I've done quite a few of these and a lot of the towns are like, hey, you gotta probably provide parking spaces for the people that are there. So. I think that's why we had what we considered suffi, more than sufficient parking, right?
I guess.
So it's a trade-off, right?
Commissioner Randolph asked if you had considered a way to reduce the size of the building. And the question was economics, part of which is the cost of the asbestos remediation, but part of which is.
It is also the garage.
So if you're reducing parking. Whether or not you also reduce, uh, the number of units in addition to that is, is a part B of that. But a reduction in parking and potentially also a reduction, the reduction in parking reduces costs fairly substantially.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah, interesting. I mean, if a four percent return on a thirty million investment would be about a million, two hundred thousand per year, if my math is correct.
Right?
That's right. And this is, I mean, this is just a big box. I mean, it takes up almost a hundred percent of the lot and it's. You know, the couple that we don't have any plans for. I mean, this is one of the uglier buildings I've ever seen submitted. Would you agree with that? You've been around this town for many years.
Well.
I mean, your name is well-known.
I mean, I don't agree with that. I mean, but there's, any of these, all of these apartment buildings look pretty much the same. You have to put, uh. Get the units in there.
It's a big box, isn't it?
They all are.
All of them?
Oh.
I mean, Beinfield does a nice job with some of his boxes, doesn't he?
Yes.
Yes. Nothing further.
Okay. Lawyer. Uh, Attorney Bellas, do you have, uh, anyone else tonight or?
We're gonna pause.
So you're, so you're going to.
What I meant by that, I'm not being sarcastic, I'm sorry. Uh, we have a traffic study expert that we'd like to have heard at the next meeting.
And then is that it?
And then that would.
Presentation?
Yes, I believe that would be the last expert that would speak. I think there's a report that we have, um, but it would only be a report as to, um. Property values, so there would be no more testament.
Is that a report you need to present on or is that something that can be submitted?
Also, I can, I can submit it beforehand, yeah.
Okay, so we.
So I, I think you should hear from the traffic.
Okay.
That's my opinion, if you don't want to hear from them.
So we will hold this open until next Tuesday's meeting.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, uh, just a quick question. What's our deadline on this? Is there, what's our regulatory deadline?
Yeah, we have to, uh, finish our hearing, uh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you told me this before.
We have to close the public hearing by July fifteenth. Great, thank you.
Next week, I'm, I'm here. I'll have the traffic engineer here.
Twenty-fourth, we'll, uh, you'll conclude your presentation with the traffic engineer.
That is correct.
Public comment.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for hearing us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
My governor, wait.
So I, uh, again, just to repeat what I mentioned at the, uh, start of this meeting, the next two items, uh, are both forty-one eighty Black Rock Turnpike. Those have already been tabled, uh, to next week, June twenty-fourth, so we will not be hearing those items tonight. The next item is, uh, eleven eighteen Cross Highway. Special exception application of Patterson Club Inc. retaining to the clubhouse renovation. Re-configuration of the golf course layout, new outbuildings and a residential triple A zone.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, for the record, my name's Bill Fitzpatrick. I'm an attorney in Fairfield with a law firm of Russell and Rizio. Offices at ten Sasko Hill Road. I'm here tonight representing the Patterson Club. Note, I am a member of the club. Patterson Club is a membership club located at eleven eighteen and ten oh nine Cross Highway. Property at eleven eighteen Cross Highway, the north. The main clubhouse, the pool and pool house, maintenance facility and an eighteen-hole golf course designed by Robert Brent Jones. That golf course opened in June of nineteen forty-seven. Property contains approximately a hundred and sixty-two acres. And as I said, located on the north side of Cross Highway, west of Banks Road, north. That is the property which is the subject of this app, like this special exception application. The club does also own property to the south of Cross Highway. That comprises just over four acres, it's a tennis court, paddle tennis courts, pickleball courts and associated outbuildings. Patterson Club is located in the Residence Triple A zoning district, a membership club. Permitted use. with permitted use in the Residence Triple A Zoning District via special exception approval. The application for the commission is a special exception per went to section twenty seven of the regulations. I'm happy to report no housing is proposed. Patterson Club proposal includes the maintenance and updating of the golf course, including dredging of several ponds, reconstruction of several culverts, replacement of the existing irrigation system, golf course updates and maintenance and reconstruction of two ball holes. Golf course updates, as you will hear from Jason Mearsman, are a reflection, an artistic vision of the golf course architect. Golf course architect retained by the L G, Jaeger Kovac. T's are reconfigured, bunkers are reshaped, greens are modified, but the golf course by and large stays the same. The proposal also includes renovations and alterations to the clubhouse, construction of a new quote turn facility. That's between the ninth hall and the empty and a new teaching building. The applicant is not aware of the vision's unprecedented influx of applications. And we will make every effort to make a, make a succinct yet thorough presentation to the commission. Presentation will include some, a presentation from Mr. Jason Mearsman, the director of greens and grounds for the club via Zoom. Presentation from Chris McCag, who's next to me, an architect with Rogers McCag Architects, and I will then conclude addressing the relevant section twenty seven criteria. This matter has been reviewed and approved by the Conservation Commission in two respects. First, the Conservation Commission reviewed and approved the club application to dredge four ponds in the westerly portion of the property and to replace several culverts that had deteriorated over the years. Uh, Conservation approved that application and that dredging project has been successfully completed. Secondly, the Conservation Commission approved an inland wetland permit, basically for the proposal that's before you tonight. Conservation Commission focus was, of course, on the golf course ren- renovations. That application was approved by the Conservation Commission. No intrusion into wetland, wetland soils approved as part of that conservation action. Primary reason the submission of this special exception application to the P and Z is to propose new construction. Those construction, as Chris McCag, the architect, will detail includes a teaching facility comprising twenty four hundred and eighty two square feet. A starter facility spanning five hundred and forty four square feet and renovations to the existing clubhouse. At this point, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to introduce by Zoom, he's on a long planned family vacation. Jason Mearsman, the director of greens and grounds for the club. Jason.
Hello, um, thank you all so much for having me. Um, as, uh, Mr. Fitzpatrick said, my name is Jason Mearsman. Um, Director of Grounds of the Patterson Club. I've been fortunate to work with the club for fourteen years and am a proud citizen of Fairfield. Um, I'm a class A member of the GCSAA Golf Course Superintendent Association of America. I'm a third generation golf course superintendent, so I've been doing this for a long, long time and, uh, been around my whole life. Uh, very excited for the project we're getting ready to be faced with here. Um, and very proud of the work we've done so far in my, my tenure. Um, one thing I'd like to note is, um, I'm currently a panelist, uh, with Sustainable Fairfield. And a lot of that has been, um, has come about through some of the great things we've been doing at the club for the environment and, and just, you know, we talked about a hundred and sixty acres, a hundred and sixty two acres of property. We have eight acres of pollinator pathway. We have, uh, we have minimized our water fertility and plant protecting usage by over thirty percent in the last fourteen years. We're highly focused on creating a, a, not only a much more fun and exciting round of golf for our members, but also a much better, um, much more sustainable, um, habitats for our, our, our Connecticut, you know, our, our Connecticut environments. Uh, we have a great bird population out there. Um, it's a migratory, uh, pattern for the bluebirds. Always seeing new, uh, wildlife every day. So again, very exciting. My, uh, proudest to know, uh, part of my career so far at Patterson Club has been the long range master planning. Um, we started this in, uh, in two thousand thirteen. I just wanted to, I'm gonna share a couple of slides if you guys don't mind. I'm gonna share a couple of slides with you if I can. There we go. So golf master plan started in two thousand thirteen. Uh, we created master plan goals to help, um, guide our decision making. Uh, there's a couple of key, um, points on those master, on the master plan goals I wanna point to. Number one is the critical infrastructure that's kind of driving this project. Uh, number two, golf practice, again, a want from the membership that was identified in the golf master planning. And then really just maximizing the opportunity. And that goes into some of the, uh, some of the stuff Mr. Fitzpatrick already talked about. So, um, number one, critical infrastructure, you know, we had dredging culverts, a very successful project. Uh, our water's moving through our property better than it has ever moved through the property. Um, areas are no longer flooding during that renovation. We got to do a number of great things I'll point out in a, in a second here. Number two on the goals is to create a world, uh, first class practice facility, uh, much like, uh, most golf courses in our area. Uh, land is, uh, i- i- is, is almost priceless. Um, but, uh, golf, back in nineteen forty six and forty seven, when we opened, golf practice didn't exist. So it's been very challenging to kind of create those, those areas for our members. And during this project, we found, uh, we identified a great opportunity for us to kind of maximize the potential of our practice. And while creating a better golf course. Um, I also like to point to number four, that kind of, uh, that was our, our, our long range planning committee's kind of goal to kind of make sure we're doing everything on, on behalf of all of our members, but also the natural beauty is a big part of our entire mission for the Patterson Club. Again, talking about our pollinator pathways. Um, so I won't waste too much more of your time here. Uh, I wanted to point out this, uh, golf course items. Uh, this is an expected life cycle, uh, that was created years, a couple of years ago by the groups below here. The USGA, the PGA, uh, Golf Course Architects, the Golf Course Superintendent Association of America. It kind of shows kind of our components that we have on the golf course and, and their life expectancy. You know, much like a home or a building, your roof has a life expectancy and here's ours, uh, our irrigation system. We're currently in year twenty nine, um, bunkers, for instance, currently our bunkers, uh, the style of bunkers we have, we have a seven to ten year life expectancy. We're on year seventeen. Again, the long range planning committee noticed all of these things and, um, started seeing the, the, uh, the opportunity to do all of this work in one fell swoop to, to minimize disturbance to membership, but also maximize our, our, uh, you know, be as just the responsible as possible and maximize our efforts. Um, irrigation, uh, this is lovely to wake up to first thing in the morning. Um, this is number ten, trying to button that up before people tee off. Um, again, a lot of this stuff is just kind of past its elastic limit here. Uh, the culverts were falling apart, so. What you're gonna see is a lot of the stuff that we're looking to do is just fixing things that are broken. Um, and while doing that, maximizing the potential. Uh, here is a plan from Mr., uh, uh, Will and Kenny Associates. Uh, as we are dredging here, we put in wetland buffers to make sure anywhere there's drainage leaving, uh, our property going into, um, water, it is going to be ran through some sedges and some other great plants. Uh, um, Mr. Kenny has drawn up, uh, phenomenal plants for our wetlands to kind of keep, um, making them beautiful for our members, but at the same time, uh, functional for the habitats. Uh, we also put in a, a, um, um, a silt trap basically so we can maintain these ponds moving forward. So we're not coming back to you, you know, shortly saying, hey, we had a couple of big storms and the silt's filled up our ponds again. So we put something in there so we could manage that moving forward. Um, also during the dredging, you've seen this bottom right photo here, um, we're going to be using all the materials that we've created during the dredging in this project, again, so we didn't have to mobilize materials off property or, and minimize what we have to mobilize onto property. Um, this is the map that we submitted for phase two of this project, phase one being the dredging. Um, it looks like a lot. Uh, you see the, the, in the very dark spots are the bunkers. These, um, again, we talked about you working with, uh, Golf Course Architect Jaeger Kovac. He's, uh, he's an up and coming architect that does all of the shaping. He'll be moving to Fairfield for six months and, and be, he'll be in an excavator every day for those six months while he's shaping every key feature on the property. But the bunkers plan to get redone, the T's, greens, and then some fairway lines change. Um, now, how this construction basically happens is very simple. It's a deconstruction, I like to call it. Basically where we remove the sod from our greens, for instance. Um, the surrounds, we put the sod from the greens over on tarps underneath a tree in the shade for reuse. Um, we come in then and we, um, take all the materials, for instance, the bunker sand, which will used in drainage pipes, uh, you know, over drainage pipes instead of bringing in pea gravel. Um, top soil and greens mix, the, the sub profile of the greens will be harvested, separated. Then we will reshape, recontour, put it back. Each one of these areas, um, will be um, disturbed for less than, for about a week max. Um, we're planning on doing this, uh, about a week, a hole per week. Um, we've, um, well, I'll continue here. And then while that's going on, the irrigation system's being updated. Uh, any drainage gets put in, so we'll be running water mainly to outfalls. Uh, and, um, and then from there, we basically are changing some grass lines. So some sod, uh, we've brought in, um, a lot of it's going to be reused. And, uh, then we, yeah, then we put it back together. So it's, it's, it's pretty uh, simple work, I would say, for, for the people that do it for a living. We've acquired the services of Labar Golf. Uh, Labar Golf Course Construction has done, um, some of the top golf courses in the country. Uh, Shinnecock, um, Merrfield Village, I think was a, a notable one because they started, uh, the project while Turner was still going on a few years back. Um, but they come in, they travel the, they travel the country and, and do this for a living, so they're very good at it. Uh, they also started an irrigation division, so they will be, um, doing our irrigation system as well. That was, uh, important to minimize the amount of different contractors we had on property. Uh, so for the most part here, we have very simple, I like to call surface work being done to all of our greens, T's, fairways. Um, and then we have a very large area near the practice green where we're gonna be putting, where we're hoping to put the the teaching building and the new halfway, um, uh, starter shed slash turn where you can stop and have a refreshment, use restroom, things of that nature. Uh, this was identified by our architect, a great opportunity for us. We've been playing, uh, the current eighteen at, at the Patterson Club has been played, uh, um, in a, in a way that wasn't originally designed. So we've been playing down a hill kind of, uh, it's been a little bit of a goofy, as we say, we have seventeen great golf holes and then we have one that, uh, that just isn't right. Um, so we identified the fact that that was never really supposed to be there. It was originally supposed to be where our driving range is. So to maximize potential here, we, we decided to turn eighteen into a par three, um, pushing the, the, the green up the hill, um, allowing more room for the short game practice area. The, uh, driving range, a, a, a range T that, that can actually, um, handle our membership and then, and then a building for teaching golf, uh, golf practice. Um, which is obviously a huge part of the game these days. Um, we also plan on moving the seventeenth green forward, so we turn that into a par five, so we don't lose the stroke on the golf course. And, um, but that is the majority of the disturbance is kind of in that area around, uh, eighteen and the driving range currently. For anybody that's a golf novice, we are switching to nine, so we don't finish on a par three. Uh, the, the hole that runs against the Oribon's, uh, horse farm here will be our eighteenth and provide an exciting finish for our membership. Does anybody have any questions on, uh, the construction or kind of the, the stuff we're planning on doing or?
Doesn't look like we have questions. Thank you.
Great, great.
Jason.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'd now like to introduce Mr. Christopher McCag of Rogers McCag Architects of South Norwalk, Connecticut. Chris.
Yes, give me one second here. Yep, on the screen. There we go, hard to see. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. My name is Chris McCag of Rogers McCag Architects. We're a firm out of South Norwalk, Connecticut. We've been there for twenty three years plus, firm originated in New York City. We specialize in only clubs nationwide. Um, we're, we're recognized for working with some of the top clubs in the country. Jason mentioned Shinnecock, Wingfoot, National. If you're a golfer, we've worked with some of the biggest ones and we've been very privileged to do so. Um, we kind of live and breathe this stuff. Our, our services cover everything at, any kind of built facility at a club, be it the turf care, be it the clubhouse, be it pool building, be it a fairway restroom. Um, we don't focus on the golf course, although obviously because of the world we live in, we know a lot about golf and we're often bumping up against it working in that, in that space. And I will say, on Jason and the club's behalf, um, one, if you haven't seen golf course work, it's really interesting to watch from a construction perspective. And especially when a firm like Labar does it, they are the top in the business and they are a well-oiled machine. And it's, if you're in the construction world, you should make the effort to watch it happen because it's pretty cool. Um, so what, what we're going to focus on are three specific areas architecturally. Uh, Jason mentioned the teaching facility at the new driving range, um, what we're calling the turn, which is a, 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 typically a snack bar restroom station on the wood, on between nine and ten halfway through the course. And then some additions, modifications to the clubhouse. And before I get into that, what I, what I would also add is that everything we're talking about here, Jason touched on this regarding the teaching facility. In the club world, every club is doing this, um, these types of things. These are, uh, very high priorities, all very popular. I wouldn't even call them trends. I, I think there've been shifts in the way clubs operate and the expectations that members have. And so everything we're about to talk about here is nothing out of the ordinary. Um, I would also add that the work that we do, um, and I think what we're recognized for and one of the reasons club brought us on, and I should note that we did the pool facility renovation a few years back, which I think came through here. Um, you haven't seen that. Hugely successful, hugely transformative, but, but most of our work is what we call contextual. So our best work is feeling like we were never there after we're done doing what we're doing. Um, we pride ourselves in that. When you work at, uh, historical buildings like the Shinnecocks, like the Wingfoots, um, that's the charge, that's the goal. And we're, we're trying to do that. Um, even though Patterson is a lot newer club and in comparison, we're trying to do that here. So I'm not sure if you're gonna be able, maybe on that screen you can see it, but I tried to automate this, um, PowerPoint to make this quick and painless. So just to identify, uh, on, on the site where we're going to talk about, you have the clubhouse, the bag drop, which will be a relevant point of reference, the driving range that Jason mentioned. Um, not existing nine and eighteen green. So he mentioned that we'll be flipping these. You'll see that in a moment. And then the existing practice green across from the clubhouse. So this is the proposed plan. Again, the clubhouse, the bag drop, the new nine green, which is that par three up to the, in the center. So would they shorten what is now eighteen, made it a par three, that's new nine. And then eighteen green becomes current on, to the far left, that becomes eighteen. And that's important from a experiential perspective, because now you're finishing up your eighteen holes right at the clubhouse, which is, which is important in, in club design. Then you, we're, they're renovating the driving range, as Jason mentioned. They're creating a new short game practice area over there, which Jason mentioned. And then from our perspective, the new golf practice facility. So these new golf practice facilities, you know, golf rounds arguably go up and down, but golf practice and performance, the curve is straight up at every club. That has to do with a lot of different things in the industry, uh, people traveling more to golf. They wanna practice. They don't necessarily wanna play as much, but they definitely wanna practice and get better. So these, uh, practice facilities, and you'll see plans for this, are basically indoor-outdoor buildings. They, they, they consist of hitting bays that are, uh, simulators so that there's a, an overhead door that opens where they can hit ideally when they're being, um, instructed by the pro. They can watch their shot, hit out onto the range, so that's one aspect of them. But they're also simulators, so the. But they're also simulators. So the door closes, the screen comes down, and they're year-round facilities. They have all the digital training technology, so it's a kind of self-sustaining performance center with, with a restroom and some support areas. So it's pretty basic in terms of program. But its placement on the driving range obviously is important because you can't put it where the hitting, outdoor hitting stalls are. You know, it needs to be positioned correctly, so you're not detracting from the traditional driving rain aspects of that area. So that's one area. And then the other two areas, you'll see where it says new starter turn. This, this reconfiguration currently, they're, what they call their turn is in the clubhouse. And their starter stands at a podium outside of the clubhouse. This is sort of safety issues, frankly, a, a lot of it. It has a lot to do with flow in golf, right? If you're a golfer, you know pace of play is a big deal. At, especially at clubs, when you expect it not to be an issue. But so flow and pace of play, keeping people moving. So the way it currently works now at Patterson, you have to park your cart, walk over to the clubhouse, go to the snack bar to get a drink. And in the meantime, there are people out there, and people start talking to people. And then the guy waiting on the tee behind them is waiting for them to get back in the truck, into the cart and get onto the next hole. But it's also safety. It's a very congested area. So there are carts coming and going, things being teed up, not literally ball on tee, but staged in terms of carts and operations. And we were trying to solve for that. And, and the reconfiguration of the golf course and the flow of the golf course and some of the golf course work that they're doing offered this opportunity to address those issues. So we're introducing this turn building, which consists of, like I said, two restrooms, a snack bar, in effect, no hood or anything like that, just strictly snacks and beverages. And then what we call a starter shack, which is simply an indoor box, eight by eight, basically where the starter directs, orchestrates golf and oversees the operation from. And then lastly, off of the existing existing outdoor covered dining areas and uncovered outdoor dining areas, we're expanding and improving upon that outdoor casual dining experience, which, as I mentioned earlier, is something that is happening at every club. So they're, they're the three areas. This is kind of the 3D version of, of that plan. It gives you a little bit better orientation. So the bag drop, this is the renovated range. This is the new short game practice area. This is the new teaching facility. I think, oh, let me move that out of the way so you can see my notes. The new nine green. The new turn. Car path up to one and ten tees. And then that staging area that I've mentioned that we're, we're addressing the congestion at. So this is a the plans for the practice facility. I'll, I'll zoom in quickly so you can see three bays, you hit out onto the range, that's the bays area. The yellow area is basically a lobby. The green area is a restroom, handicap accessible, all this is handicap accessible, cart accessible off of the cart path. And then a storage and a janitor's closet. So the program is pretty basic. There is a basement, which is just general storage, which is still an option that may or may not happen. That's an alternate in the scope. And, but it, but it's in the design. I can, here, I, I, I guess I get to do that too. I included a few reference photographs to give you ideas, a, a sense of what these places look like. Very high technology. Again, if you're a golfer, you know this stuff. If you don't, they're very tech-heavy for instruction. They have pressure plates in the floor. They have cameras 270 degrees. They, they measure everything, every aspect of golf in a golfer's body when, when they're instructing. They obviously conditioned to be indoor/outdoor, so on and so forth. We've done several of these, probably close to twenty all over the place. But, but this is the kind of facilities that is, you know, the norm and the appropriate level of structure. We included some images at the bottom here. And importantly, so these are what we're calling outbuildings, right? So from a arguably a site planning perspective, if you think of the clubhouse as the main formal building, we consider all the buildings outside of that is outbuildings, the buildings across the road. And architecturally, our reference was the original barn, which is kind of the old barn, which is right across the road. So, so, you know, our point of reference from a, a language and an architectural perspective was that we were going to play off of the barn. Right? If you, if you're familiar with that building, vertical siding, scallop shingles in the, you know, very kind of traditional Fairfield County barn-like. So our concept on these buildings is to play off of that. So we're not trying to make mini-me clubhouses out here. We're not, we're, we're, the clubhouse is clearly the statement on the property. And a lot more formal. And these buildings are just additions to that barn and, and I don't think I can zoom on it anymore, but I have the photograph there. That's the barn over on King's Highway. So, so architecturally, very simple, contextual, if you will. Not meant to jump out, not meant to be a statement, quite the opposite. They kind of disappear and fit into the fabric of the golf course. Don't draw attention them, to themselves, but are functional and still pleasant to look at and to be inside of. So that's it for the teaching facility. Over to the turn, there's a partial site plan here. So you can see the slightly L-shaped building is what we call the turn. And then the starter, and there's a pergola connecting it. So you're coming down the car path. If I can come down the car path from, say, nine, you park your cart, you go down a walk, there's a walk-up window, like a food truck, like a snack bar. You get a drink, you get your iced tea or a sandwich, tuna fish, whatever. Tuna bowl, jump back in your cart and then head up, head back up the path to ten or one. And then this car path comes around, you'll see this in a different slide from eighteen. Another safety issue currently, if you're walking from bag drop, so people typically often park their car, even if they drop their bag off, they walk up to this area that way through bag drop. And currently there's no sidewalk, so everybody's walking up this car path, which goes back to the cart barn and often staff are driving carts back and forth. So, you know, we're trying, back to the safety issue, we're trying to address some safety issues on property, obviously not public safety issues, but safety issues nonetheless. The plan to the right. Again, quickly, the beige area is the snack bar itself. Two blue areas are restrooms, the green area is the janitor's closet. There's a small vestibule to, you know, to recede the restroom entries off the faces of the building, so you're not staring at people coming out of the restroom. If you're in the surrounding area, we're trying to make it quaint and, and charming too. Next slide, some images there. Similarly, I'll just go to the middle, maybe I don't get all of them. So coming up the road from the cart barn area, again, you can get a sense of the vertical signing. You can't really see the scallops, but the language is what I explained earlier from the barn. Just a few different views. Again, the, the image to the lower right there is there's the main barn, but there's also an old shed, which is maybe not as old as the barn, but trying to get the same idea across. So, and then coming back from that cart, this gives you a, a sense of the relationship coming from nine green on that card path and seeing the clubhouse in the background in the distance. So not, not large-scale buildings at all. Functional buildings, but stylistically appropriate, I think, I would say. And then lastly, the, the clubhouse. So we're not so the blue area is the, really the area of focus. And the intent there is currently currently the cart path, a big wide boulevard of a cart path kind of comes through here. And similarly, there are safety issues there because carts are coming back and forth, people are walking back and forth from the putting green. So the, part of the, the genesis of the expansion of this of this terrace area was, you know, we often talk about connecting the clubhouse to the golf course, right? As designers, we're, we're trying to connect that experience and bring those two, two things together. That was actually part of COVID too, right? When people discovered for the first time that they liked being outside dining. So, so part of this idea is to bring the cart path now around the back of the green. So now this, this walkway is, is still wide enough to be functional, but it's a pedestrian-only car path. So now the vehicular traffic, if you will, is separated from the pedestrian. And that becomes a softer, more user-friendly member-connected experience from the, from the terrace, rather than feeling like you're on the other side of a highway when you're dining on one side and the green is on the other. So this is a blow up of that area. And the first few colors will be what exists. So this shaded area that just came up is, I call, existing terrace. And then of that terrace, these two areas are covered terrace currently. And what we're proposing to do is make the yellow all covered now, so we're expanding covered area. And then in addition to that, the green is expanded uncovered terrace. Right? So we don't, obviously, because of acreage and everything else, we don't have coverage issues or anything like that. In terms of building heights, we're not really even, there's no desire to test any of that. We're staying well within any zoning requirements for heights, so on and so forth. Only because you touched on it in the previous fire truck access, we, we, we're not restricting any current access around the current clubhouse or around these buildings. We will ultimately review that with the fire marshal in terms of fire hydrants and coast, hose distances for trucks and so on and so forth. Don't think that's an issue, but that will obviously be all outlined on our, on our permit drawings and coordinated as well in advance of even them being filed. And then some renderings to give you an idea of what this will look like. Again, the, the lower image is an image of kind of what you see from the green now. Right? So this is the clubhouse, the portion of the covered terrace, the umbrellas. And really, we're wrapping the corner in effect. And architecturally, we, we didn't want to just just continue that railing because there is space on the second floor. And one, it would be too much balcony or roof to look out over, so we were trying to be sensitive to all those things. This is an annotated rendering from the other direction. So they're, they are modifying this green a little bit. We're providing some fire, fire tables, we call them, not quite fire pits, but, you know, some seating area, casual seating area next to the green. This is that new pedestrian path along separating the putting green from the terrace. Expanded terrace and soft seating, you know, if you've, if you've been to, or even restaurants, the, the popular thing is the fire pits with the soft seating to complement before or after dining. You know, we have a lingo in our industry that, that, the, the, the name of the game is to get the members to linger longer. Right? Because the longer they linger, the more money they spend. And at the end of the day, the club is a business and that's what the name of the game is. So we're trying to create these spaces to promote that and make members want to hang. And, and we think this will do that. We, and you'll see a blow up of that and then some images of other clubs that we've done similar things for. And, and all these clubs have been hugely successful. Very transformative in the way they operate and, and addressing, you know, higher expectations and different expectations of, of new generations at private clubs. Just another shot, again, with some samples, samples to the right. And then more images. And then lastly, and I don't know even if you, you're interested, this is a video, it's a few minutes long. But if you're interested, I'll hit play. So this is from the bag drop. It's a little slower on your screen than mine. I might have to advance it. That's the wifi. Yeah, it's going to take too long. This video is in the record?
Yes.
Yes. I need it. Yes. You can go, you can go through it. Okay. It takes you, it takes flight. It's an, it's an, an over, a flyover, shows you everything. And I think that's it. So I started it again.
Questions for Mr. McCag?
I have to play that score. It's great. What are you really adding to the existing footprint with these?
To the existing footprint of the clubhouse?
Yeah, I mean, with this, I don't see an excessive increase.
There really isn't. There really isn't. They, they, I think there's sixteen hundred feet maybe of added terrace to the clubhouse footprint?
The starter facility is five forty-four. The teaching facility is twenty-four hundred and change. There really isn't anything significant, particularly in the context of the sixty thousand square.
Additional facility that kind of looks like that barn that I'm very familiar with is, it's one level.
The teaching facility?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, well, it may have a basement, but it's one level. It's one level of program space. Any other questions? Richard Randolph.
Do you do eight thirty Gs?
I'm tempted to. After that.
Thank you for your thorough and thoughtful presentation and clearly you've got a lot of passion about this and a lot of thought gone into this and that's I wouldn't expect anything less, less for the Patterson Club, but I do appreciate your thoughtfulness on this.
Thank you, Chris. Mr. Chairman, I'd now like to conclude. As I noted earlier, this proposal's been reviewed and approved by Conservation, Town Engineering Department. We viewed the proposed stormwater detention plan in that process, approved it, and they've confirmed approval of this plan, which is basically the same. It's also my understanding the town health department has reviewed and approved the proposed septic plan for the new buildings. A membership club, such as the Patterson Club, is a permitted use via special exception approval in the residence AAA zone, section twenty-seven of the regs. Special exception piece sets for several criteria. First, the location, type and character of the proposed construction must be in harmony with the neighborhood, not hinder appropriate development or use of adjacent property or impair its value. Patterson Club has existed on this site since nineteen forty-six. Proposed construction, which is relatively minor in size and scope, is fully consistent. I think you'll agree with both the existing club architecture and the neighborhood. In addition, the proposed construction has virtually no impact on neighboring properties. Clubhouse renovation is very difficult to see from neighboring properties or the street. The teaching facility and the turn facility are over two hundred feet from cross highway and over four hundred and fifty feet from the nearest residence. Section twenty-seven addresses avoiding undue traffic congestion. The most relevant factor to consider here is the fact that the proposed improvements will serve only the existing Patterson Club membership. Given this framework, the traffic will essentially remain the same as will the parking demand. There will be no traffic congestion nor any parking problems. Landscaping plan has been submitted as well as a lighting plan. To conclude, I think we comply with section twenty-seven. Proposed improvements permit the updating of the Patterson Club property and facilities in a manner consistent with the expectations of the club membership. Again, no increase in the number of Patterson Club members. For the reasons I've outlined, I'd request the application be approved. This is simply a minor modification to an existing special exception use, which has existed on-site for over seventy-five years. Various experts, including the project surveyor, Michael Chevlin, project engineer, Mark Ackman. I believe Bill Kenny's online as well, our wetland expert, and the Patterson Club General Manager, Tom Bartek, are all available for questions if necessary, as is Mr. McCag, Mr. Mearsman, and me. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Attorney Fitzpatrick. Any final questions for the applicant from the
I would just say thank you very much for your thoughtful application and comments. Really appreciate.
I would just say thank you very much for your thoughtful application and comments. Really appreciated. And yeah, thanks again. We, we don't always get the most thorough presentations and this one was really great. So thank you.
Agreed. Um, that will conclude the initial presentation by the applicant. We'll turn to public comment. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to be heard on this item? Not appear there. There is, uh, Ms. Hargan, is there anyone who signed in and chat?
Sign up in the chat.
Is there anyone joining us remotely or by phone who wishes to be heard on this item? If you're joining by phone, please press star six to unmute yourself. Last call in person or remote for anyone who's like, who'd like to be heard on this item. Okay, um, I will close the public comment on this, uh, this item. Any?
I have nothing to add, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. I'll conclude the public.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we'll turn to our last three items, which I'll call together. Zoning Regulation Amendment, application of fourteen seventy-seven Congress Street LLC to establish a new section five point four Congress Street Affordable Housing District pursuant to section eight thirty G of the Connecticut General Statutes. Fourteen seventy-seven Congress Street Zone Change Application of fourteen seventy-seven Congress Street LLC to establish a Congress Street Affordable Housing District on land presently zoned residence AAA. And fourteen seventy-seven Congress Street Compliance Application, fourteen seventy-seven Congress Street LLC for conceptual review for a thirty-nine unit eight thirty G multifamily residential project in a residence AAA. Bernie Bellis.
Thank you. For the record, I'm attorney Stephen Bellis. I'm with Appelgrino Law Firm and I represent fourteen seventy-seven Congress Street LLC. Oh, fourteen seventy-seven Congress Street. Apparently I get all these applications. Anyway. Some of them, some of my remarks have been submitted online, so I'm not going to worry with, since I'm last on the agenda. Maybe you get to go home a little early, but I'll just kind of summarize a little bit. Uh, as you well know, there's been a housing crisis, uh, according to the legislature. That Connecticut's like tied for worst in the state for, uh, uh, housing. Apparently a hundred and ten thousand more units and that there's also been also this lack of housing. It's been affecting the employers, being able to have employees live here and perhaps driving people away. I've given you the studies that were submitted, um, to the legislature. I don't have to lecture you about eight thirty G. You probably could lecture me. But, um, I understand that, um, is, I think, as one as this commissioner said, it is a blunt force instrument and, um, but it is a state law. Legislature passed this law in nineteen ninety and, uh, it's been pretty much the same, a few amendments, but basically the standard's the same. Um, what you have to decide is whether the decision is necessary to protect substantial public health interest in health or safety or other matters which you can consider. And that these interests outweigh the need for affordable housing and that the interest cannot be protected by reasonable changes to the development. So in this case, Fairfield's not an exempt town, as we know. Um, it's around three, it's probably three percent affordable housing. It's bumped up a little bit. Um, but it's certainly below the ten percent that the state requires. And then again, this application was filed before the state granted the town a moratorium on eight thirty G applications. So, um, what am I doing here again tonight? Um, in this application, I am only requesting a zone change and text amendment under eight thirty G. And I think you know, the court in one thirty-one Beach stated that uh, an application, uh, an applicant is statutorily entitled to seek a change in the zone and text amendment. And they were citing the River Ben case, which held for the proposition that the text amendment is actually a part of the eight thirty G application. It's in the regulations that you have to submit a proposed text amendment. Um, I want to be clear that this text amendment and this zone change is only applies to fourteen seventy-seven Congress Street. Does not apply to any other properties. The zone change and text amendment, um, have conceptual site plans and, um, I think I may have mentioned this last time, a conceptual site plan is not the same as a full and final site plan that is signed off by a uh, professional engineer. It simply gives you, um, an, under the eight thirty G. The language is, anyone seeking an affordable housing application is seeking a change of zone. Uh, submits a conceptual site plan describing the proposed development, the total number of residential units and their arrangement on the property. And the proposed development's roads and traffic circulation, sewage disposal and water supply. So that's under section C of eight thirty G. And that's what I'm going to be presenting to you tonight. The regulations under eight thirty G, there's regs that go with the statute and they basically say, if you have a conceptual site plan, shall not require the submission of the type of plans, studies, calculations or similar detailed information that would otherwise be required in connection with site development. Um, subdivision erupts, re-subdivision, when approved, will serve as the basis for issues of a building permit. So what that means is that I will have to come back if, if and when you or a court approves this zone change and text amendment, I would have to come back to this commission with final site plans that you get to review. Um, so we're not, we're, we're a step before that. So that's what conceptual site plans are.
I have a question.
Yeah. All right, Commissioner Harrison.
Sorry, uh, did you read the Echo Northwest, um, study?
Did I read the study? I don't know where the question.
Yeah, the, you, you have the Echo Northwest study in, in our evidence?
Uh, I just cited you, I think someone asked me what's, what was, what consulting group presented the, uh, study to the legislature?
I, I understand you answered that on an earlier application, but my question is, did you read it?
I, I did not read the whole study, no.
Okay, because it's, it, it's really not depend, I mean, if you read it, you would know it's really dependent on cost burdened individuals, not really housing needs. So I, I, I think, I, if you read the statute where they, where they actually asked Echo Northwest to, to commission, when they commissioned the study, it was very, it was based on a very narrow scope. So I think that, I, let me just, I just, I just think that scope should be in here too, because you're saying there's this massive housing crisis in Connecticut where the scope with, with the Echo Northwest has nothing to do with eight thirty G, it has to do with fair share study. With fair share housing idea that, that's in the, that was passed by a legislator this year. So I, I just, I, I, I just think there should just be more context when you're presenting studies.
I suggested that there were studies that were presented to the legislature that spoke to the idea that there is a housing crisis in Connecticut. The other study that was presented was done by the Connecticut Business Institute.
Yeah, CBI, I understand. Yeah, no, I'm familiar with, with both these studies.
And they, they said the same thing, so.
I, I'm just saying, sir, if you're going to do your client a service, I, I would just read the studies before you submit them because Echo Northwest was commissioned by the state. And they came up with findings based on a very narrow scope.
Okay, that's fair enough. I, I don't have any disagreement with that.
Okay, well, thank you.
You're welcome. So, um, getting back to the zone change and text amendment, as I said, we would have to come back if there were, with final site plans if it's approved. So where are we? So we have requested a zone change and text amendment and we also filed an affordability plan, uh, that goes with it. So this zone change and text amendment is clearly under eight dash thirty G. It's not your regular zone change and text amendment. It is also under eight thirty G. So the first thing I gave you all, uh, as an exhibit was a property survey, um, which just shows the property. It's approximately one point eight eight acres. I've given you some conceptual site plans and building plans um, that we're going to get into a little bit later, but basically the applicant is seeking an apartment building with thirty-nine units. There's a garage beneath the units and then five floors above the garage. Uh, in the parking area, it's proposed to have thirty-nine parking spaces. So that's, uh, we'll go a little bit more into that. That's the overview of what we're talking about here tonight. The affordable plan is what we call a set aside development and you're familiar with that. That means that these thirty percent of the units will be deed restricted as affordable for forty years. And, um, with the, with this number of units, that means there will be twelve affordable units. Six at the eighty percent of the AMI, uh, and six percent at sixty percent AMI. So, um, it is a set aside development. I'm not going to dwell on that because you know what it is. Uh, the units will be dispersed throughout the building. It'll be in the same quality and size as the market rate units. And the project would be administered by, um, uh, Mark Nolan and his, as an administrator. Uh, his company has served as an administrator for eight thirty G projects. I've attached his resume. He's been doing it for forty years. Um, but lately he's done a lot of these eight thirty Gs for towns. I know he does it for Stratford. Shelton, there's quite a few others, but, um, around us, those are the towns that he does. Um, the project's going to be, uh, served by sewer and water. Uh, I have a report from Jason Edwards, uh, that there's adequate capacity. And he has submitted a sewer plan and I'll let him go over those numbers with you. Uh, he's on the line. There's also adequate water supply. There's a, a report. As you know, uh, we do, uh, a demand will serve letter with Aquarion. They have you do the, uh, flow tests, uh, to determine how much water is available. And, uh, according to Mr. Edwards, uh, company, there's no problem supplying, um, the necessary gallons to the thirty-nine units. He'll discuss that if you have any questions with that. We've given you, uh, elevations, uh, and floor plans. And again, um, these are conceptual drawings, so they just kind of give you a flavor of what the building's going to look like. What the units are going to, what the, uh, apartments are going to look like and whatnot. On this particular property, there is an existing, uh, home. So, um, we'll discuss some of those items. Let me see what else. Trying to speed through this for you guys. Oh, traffic study. Uh, Kermit Hewa was contacted. He's a registered engineer. He'll testify as to the traffic reports. He is, um, going, will testify that the traffic generated by the development will be adequately and safely accommodated by the adjacent roadways. And that the traffic impact of the development will be, in his words, negligible. Um, he will be coming to our next meeting as I discuss with your chairman to testify and answer any of your questions on traffic. So we'll hold, we'll hold this open if you could please until his, uh, presentation. At this point, I, I think it would be wise if I can try to call up, uh, Jason Edwards, so he could take you through a little bit of what I suggested, um, as far as the conceptual site plan, the sewer, the water. And any questions you may have about the site. And I see Mr. Edwards on your screen.
Yeah, everybody hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Good evening. Um, Jason Edwards, uh, J. Edwards Associates Engineers and Surveyors. I'm a professional licensed land surveyor in the state of Connecticut. Um, I am the principal of J. Edwards and Associates. We have, uh, multiple engineers on staff um, that are employed by J. Edwards and Associates. Um, and anything that's engineering related is, is signed and reviewed by, by an engineer. Um, if there is something that I need to answer that requires an engineer, I will defer, um, that question, but most of this I'm pretty comfortable with. Can you pull up the, the, um, you want me to run through the site plan, Steve? Or what do you want me to do sewer or?
Uh, you could start with the site plan.
Okay, can, um, either I share my screen or can someone pull it up?
Um, we have someone here that's very good at it. It's not me.
So yeah, this is, uh, the conceptual site plan. Again, it's all, this is all conceptual. Uh, we did put some, some thought into the concept to make sure it works, but, um, what we're proposing is, uh, single access drive with a, uh, parking lot or driveway with parking either side that comes under the building, uh, through a garage entry here. Uh, this, this is all below grade or below building, um, parking. Uh, the project is in a flood zone, so we have to keep the building elevated anyway. Um, so everything would be lifted and be flood compliant. Uh, we're showing a conceptual, uh, stormwater treatment system here, uh, that is sized for, um, to meet Fairfield standards and deep standards, um, for this size development, but we haven't detailed it all out. Um, and again, we're in a flood plain, so we had to create a compensatory storage area. Uh, basically what that means is if, in a flood plain, if you fill the site at all, which we would have to fill some in the back for the parking lot, you then have to create a, an equal, um, hole essentially for the water to go through. So sort of like a bathtub, if you fill up one spot, you gotta balance it out. So that's what this is down here. Uh, there is wetlands on, um, two sides of the project here, the west and east, I guess. Um, so anything we do here, um, well, the stormwater treatment, we would, we would end up needing to get a wetlands permit, uh, for, through conservation if we were to move forward with a full design. Um, we've looked at the sightlines for the, for, uh, the entrance and we meet, um, the standards provided by our traffic engineer. Don't recall what the distances were, but they're on there. If you want to go to the next page, I guess. Again, these are just conceptual building plans. They were done, um, by my client. Uh, so this just shows a conceptual, uh, front of the building. Uh, this would be obviously the garage entry here. You'd have doors and stairs going up. And maybe they show an elevator as well. Um, uh, so you'd probably have an elevator. Um, and, uh, you can go on to the next one. Um, that's the parking layout, um, from the architect. Just really zoom in of what we showed on the site plan. The existing home is to remain in this plan, uh, conceptually. So it would have its own driveway and be, uh, separate from the building. You can keep going. Um, this is a conceptual floor plan that shows a unit count, a mix of bedrooms. Again, it's all, um, not professionally designed here. It's just a schematic plan for concept. Um, that's kind of the extent of what I have on that. Uh, if you want to pull up the, um, the sewer plan that we generated. I think that's in there somewhere. I think it's called sewer schematic, maybe or something like that.
Just have to rotate it.
Oh, sure. Yeah, so, um, our site is on the north side of the page or the right side of the page. Uh, what we're proposing is a low flow grinder pump that would then run a small two-inch force main, uh, that would run all the way down and tie into a manhole on Black Rock Turnpike. That is the same line that, um, was recently, I forget the address on Black Rock Turnpike, but, uh, the project just up from Hiho, uh, had recently been approved to connect to the same place. As part of that analysis, they provided, um, some flows and, uh, utilization of that pipe. And that, I think they put it at about thirty-one percent. So we use that to, uh, calculate that there would be capacity, adequate capacity in that, um, in that main for us to connect to conceptually if we were to do this. Um, and the rest of it is designed and would be reviewed, uh, by WPC, I assume. And similarly with the water, uh, we have not yet gotten the will serve letter from, uh, Aquarian, but we did get the flyer flow results and the pressure is, in our opinion, adequate for, um, what we're proposing. Uh, and it would require that we extend the water main, um, similar distance up this, following this path. Uh, we haven't generated that plan yet, um, but we will be doing that in the near future, probably before the next meeting, depending on when that is. Uh, I don't know if that's tomorrow or next week. Um, if it's next week, then, uh, we probably have it before then. I think that's really all I have, Steve. If you've got anything else you want me to talk about, let me know. Or if you have any questions.
Uh, I have a couple of questions. Uh, one, uh, with the, what is, do you know the current uh, amount of impervious? And then the, uh, level, the amount of impervious that will be there with the proposed building?
Um, I, I do have it here. I don't know that it was submitted because all we were doing was conceptual. You know, we didn't do a full stormwater plan on this yet. But we did take it into account with our concept, so I can, I can pull that up for you if you want to wait a minute. Or I can get it for you at the next meeting if we're coming back anyway.
That, that, that part, you could get back to me on that. Uh, but then the follow-up to that is, so you don't have a stormwater plan? That, correct?
No, we, we have not done that. It's, uh, this is only a concept plan. So, well, I think. Well, I think if the way I understand it is what we're asking is that the regulation be approved. And then we would come back and submit a site plan under that regulation if it exists.
But it's, this is not just a regulation. This is a compliance application as well, and. You have, you're not presenting any evidence that. It's that this proposal is capable of handling. Stormwater runoff from the project.
I I maybe I should answer that. We know we want a compliance on this one. This is just a um. Zone change and.
The agenda says you're doing a compliance.
I I don't write the agenda. It's.
That's the way we noticed it.
That's the way she noticed it. It's just so you're clear. It's a zone change and text amendment. So what 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 he's saying is that. If 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 this zone change were to be approved, we'd have to come in with a full site plan. So what does that mean? You need wetlands approval, uh, which we don't have. You would need the drainage uh calculations, which um you're referring to. Uh, you would need um the full site plans. Um, in order to review them to see whether they are um. Uh, in compliance, not only with eight thirty G, but with with this text amendment, you know, right number of units, blah, blah, blah. So all that comes at a second stage. We're only doing the zone change and text amendment. We're asking you to change this zone. To allow. Multi-family development, meaning apartments. Up to thirty nine units. That's what we're asking. We have not given you something as detailed as final site plan.
So I guess that that is your right as an applicant, so. Uh, Commissioner Randolph.
I have a question for staff. Um, so. We haven't seen this type of text amendment before, have we? I mean, I haven't, so. Um, so basically, the, it sounds as if the. Um, our obligation. Or the text amendment is similar to an eight thirty G. We have to see if there's any safety or health. Issues in order to validate whether this text amendment is is uh suitable. Um, but there's a specificity to the number of units here. Uh, and there's not enough information here for us to. Appide on the number of units.
Um, and I I don't know if you're asking me your staff.
Well, I'm at, I'm.
I would address the applicant.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry. I'll I'll be glad to answer your questions, but you did say staff.
Yeah, so staff nodded their head that this is similar to. Uh, acknowledge this is similar to an eight thirty G. So um, right now, uh, there is a. I'll say a pre schematic site plan, uh, but your text amendment is very specific in terms of the number of units. Um, I I don't have enough information to approve the number of units. Here based upon the information presented. I understand our obligation legally. Um, is to uh consider this text amendment. Uh, would it be possible to? Uh, not specify the number of units in your text amendment?
So I think you could look at it this way, and I I'm not trying to be sarcastic. Up to thirty nine units, that could be ten, right? If we come in with a site plan that works for ten units, it could be twenty. It cannot be forty.
But could you, could you not specify any units at all to say that we're, we're acknowledging that we need to put an eight thirty G here? But right now, I don't have enough information to say up to thirty nine is sufficient. There's not enough information for me to do that, so.
Yeah, I I I understand your dilemma, so I think if, how can I say this? Um. All, I I think to answer your question is I have to put some number of density. Um, in a text amendment. Well, it all, all your regulations. No, forget eight thirty G, right? All your regulations will say, did you have a one acre? I'm picking this up. You could only have one dwelling unit, it has a density. Now. That that particular piece of park, park, or maybe on a slope that's so steep and have all wetlands that you can't get any houses, right? But that was when you come in with the site plan and say, no guy, I'm sorry. You 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 can't even build that one house because of the site. That's when you get to make that determination. So think of it as just being a limitation, a maximum limitation. Doesn't mean you're gonna get that.
And I don't know if this is staff or.
Yeah.
Or applicant question. Would it be redundant to say up to thirty nine units, subject to? Wolfen safety regulations? Would that be redundant? Cause that's already implicit in the. In the regulation? I don't know who to ask.
Yeah, that's okay. So so this, I think that the site plan would also be. Uh, would would also come under that, the final site plan, not these conceptual drawings, would also come under that context. You would look at that. When it, when the final site plan comes in.
So, but I'm just saying, would it be redundant if we were to add that as a condition for approval? Say, subject to. Reasonable health and safety.
I don't think that could hurt, right? I'm protecting the commission, right? Yeah.
Again, I think that you guys have reviewed enough eight thirty G applications to understand the. Threshold requirements under the law. And if you feel like you don't have enough information to do that, to make those findings, that's up to you to deliberate.
Yeah, so right now, we don't have enough information, and you've acknowledged that, that that will be subject to additional application.
Yeah, the the additional, I I just wanna make it clear that this is only a zone change and text amendment, so you have now this, you've changed the zone. And it it now is, I forget what I call this one, but I I apologize, the congress zone or whatever, right? And then I'd have to come in at a later date with a final site plan, just like you would get a site plan.
Earlier today.
Yeah, that's a real site plan. And then you would get that site plan and you would do the same thing, but be a little nicer this time. No, but you know what? I know you are. I'm only teasing. Uh, you would give it the same review that you would give any site plan under any regulation you. And if it doesn't meet the text.
Just, just to address your nice question, I. Uh, I acknowledge that we have legal responsibility for eight thirty Gs. And my record of voting to approve eight thirty Gs is clear.
Yeah, I believe it is.
I I don't, I voted for them. I don't like them.
I didn't say that.
But that's not the criteria.
I agree with you on that, yes.
The criteria for approving it.
That is correct.
Uh, there's not enough information here for me to say thirty nine units. That's, that's my.
Wrestling with that. Yeah, I get it. Um.
Uh, Commissioner Harrison?
I I just have a question here. So are are we separating these? Cause right now, there, so there's eight, nine, ten. Are we looking at the? Or are we, are we looking at the zoning regulation amendment?
Commissioner Harrison, it's a good, so first of all, it's a good question. Uh, the applicant is is saying that. The, that number ten on the agenda uh is.
Should be removed.
Should be removed, and that we should not be considering that at all.
I'd like to make a vote, I'd like to make the uh motion to remove that from the agenda. I just need a sec. I mean, because I'm, because, because I would just want clarity from Ms. Harrigan, our planning director. Because when we make a zoning change, we have full discretion. It has nothing to do with eight three G. And I just wanna make that clear, or get that clarity from our planning director.
Attorney Bellis.
Can you clarify that?
Attorney Bellis is making this application.
I'm asking you though. I'm not, I'm not asking the attorney for the applicant, I'm asking you.
I just wanna respond.
Attorney Bellis is making this application for the zoning regulation amendment under the eight thirty G statute.
No, I I I I see that. I'm I'm just a little.
I can respond. It's up to the chair.
Please.
Yeah, I I am not filing a compliance application. I know it says it on, it says it on the agenda, and I.
I understand.
I I understand why it's there, because it's normally there on most.
So it's clear, because it's not clear to me, and I'm a commissioner.
It's only a zone change and text.
Hold on one minute. So I just wanna be clear that uh. By not acting on this, we're not jeopardizing, we're not at risk of this automatically becoming approved. Because typically, obviously, that's what.
So it was my understanding from the application materials submitted. That this was the conceptual site plan that was submitted as part of this application package. Which is why I noticed it as such in three parts. So I guess. If you would like to withdraw the conceptual site plan aspect of this application package. You can choose to do that, with just the zoning regulation amendment and the zone change.
I would respond to that, and I'm not trying to be difficult, that I have to submit a conceptual site plan under the statute. And the regulations, but it's only conceptual, and I've said it, and I'll say it again for the record. I have to come back. I would have to come back if the zone change and text amendment were approved with a final site plan.
But this is, but this is on the agenda, and so whether you want it to be heard or not, it's on the agenda. It's been submitted, even if that's not your intention, and if it's. In sub, if the application, the compliance application has been filed, and this commission doesn't take action, it default, it. It by default gets approved.
No, all right, let me, we'll back up. I'm not trying to trick anyone here. Um. So I have filed two applications. It's a zone change and text amendment. Why it was, I understand from um. The planner now why she noticed it that way, because she saw conceptual site plans. I have no problem, but I am not asking this commission to vote on a site plan. I'm just not. So I, you want me to withdraw C from the agenda? I have no problem doing that.
That's what I would recommend.
Yeah, that's fine. I don't wanna, it's fine.
Yeah, I would request.
I could do it in writing with your planner, whatever you guys want.
Please, I I request that you withdraw uh a complete compliance application.
I have no problem, cause I didn't file one.
Just to.
Yeah, yeah, to make it clean. I have no problem doing it. I'll put it in writing.
So so number ten, just for clarity, that is not. Being just, that is not, that's not what you're asking.
Uh, Commissioner Harrison, that was, my request was uh that number ten be withdrawn.
I don't know what ten is.
Number ten is the compliance application. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. Okay.
Okay, I hope that's clear.
Thank you. Okay, so. Just to, now, just to be clear, we are continuing to hear. Numbers, number eight, which is the zoning regulation amendment, and number nine, which is the zone change application.
Yeah, text amendment and zone change. That is correct.
I have another question when you're ready. Yeah, just one more. So how, I guess, how far would this district be? Like, what what is, can you just talk about the mapping of this? And like, how far it would be? Would it exist past fourteen seventy seven Congress Street?
No, I I, no, that's a good question. The answer is no, it is not. Um, and the reason for that is in my application, and in the affordable plan, I've attached what we call an exhibit A. Which is the legal description of where this text amendment and zone, zone change would take place. And it is only on fourteen seventy seven Congress Street, no other properties.
Okay, and would that be able to be done elsewhere in town, or just for this one plot of land?
Cannot be done anywhere else in town, other than this one plot of land.
Okay, thank you.
So just a staff question. So is a um. Meets and bounds description, is that an adequate substitution for a map change?
There's a, oh, sorry.
I I believe he had both in his application.
I have a survey as well.
Survey and the property description.
Your question, I have both.
Thank you for the clarification.
No, those are good questions, cause in other cases, that has spilled over to other properties, and that's not my intention. Any other good questions?
Do you have uh other?
I have a traffic study engineer that I've asked, I think I said to you last time, he'll testify next week. I'll go into Attorney Green, and if he needs more time. Gonna deal with it next week.
Yeah, I'm sorry, just to follow up, to clarify. So that's Z, that's uh exhibit Z C dash one, is that your map? Shows, you show the perimeter.
No, that's a five hundred, no, that's not the map. So there's a map.
But it's the parcel called out in there.
See, in your town, you require us to do a five hundred foot radius. That, that's not the zone change map. The parcel that's called out. Is highlighted in stripes. Is that fair enough? But there's also a property survey that Mister Edwards referred to, and that's attached uh to the application. And it's attached also to the league, and and also a legal description. I have both. The legal description is meets and bounds. Um, and the property survey is not that five hundred radius map. It's the little one that he showed you on the screen.
Good, thanks.
Yeah, no problem.
Any other questions for Attorney Bellis? And you were uh. You, there's a traffic.
Yes, I see.
In the uh, the record.
Yes, it's um dated May twenty twenty five by KWH Enterprises. It's in the record.
Yep. So you're not expecting additional uh, any additional materials, you're, that you mentioned Attorney Green. Potentially needing additional time. You're just talking about your. Uh, consultant presenting on this next week.
I'm trying to be accommodating to another.
Okay, um, so if there are no other questions by the commission, uh, we will. Conclude for tonight, holding this.
Wanna get to speak?
Are you a member of the public?
Yes.
The initial application has not been, uh, initial presentation has been concluded. We're not closing the public hearing on this. We're holding this open.
It was told to be a public hearing.
That's not what I was thinking. That was a public hearing.
Attorney Green, is this not? You just indicated that you're doing this, that you're requesting this to accommodate Attorney Green.
No, I have a traffic study engineer coming.
Yes.
Next week, testify.
I may just, I I, without, I don't know what the plan is that the commission has in terms of the order proceedings. But um I had spoken with Attorney Bellis uh before the meeting, and I had spoken uh. With Ms. Harrigan yesterday. I represent the Merritt Parkway Conservancy and potentially some other parties. And I just note that uh, first of all, there were a number of documents that were just posted yesterday. On this application, and I need additional time, and I. Ms. Harrigan, that I would need additional time to potentially review them with some consultants. Personally, I am leaving town on Thursday morning and not returning till Tuesday morning. I haven't even had a chance to, I literally have not been able to open these documents and look at them. Uh, so what I am hoping, and I understand the schedule. Dilemma that uh the commission has right now, but I am hoping for at least two weeks. And I had asked Attorney Bellis potentially allow the public hearing to stay open past next Tuesday. To potentially the week after, and he seemed to be faithful to that, and I understand that. We may run into other scheduling problems, but.
So your, your request was to not continue this next week, but the following Tuesday, July first.
No, I I believe what Attorney Bellis would like is to be able to have his traffic consultant.
Right.
Who will also be here for one oh eight Bayrow Street to continue on June twenty fourth. But then to keep the public hearing open for fourteen seventy seven Congress. So that Attorney Green could then present at a later meeting, and then we could also have public comment after.
Objection to that.
The entirety of the applicant's presentation has been conducted.
I received something from the town and said this was a public meeting, and then I'm allowed to come and speak.
You are uh allowed to speak during the public hearing. Public comment. Uh, part of a public hearing does not always begin on the first day of a public hearing. Uh, it's, it's.
I received this letter.
You received the letter.
Few days ago.
Understand that.
And I'm here, because I'm allowed to be here, and I'm allowed to speak.
You're not, you are allowed to be here. It is routine. This happens all the time that public hearings begin. Are are opened, and public comment does not begin that night, so it is, you are certainly uh allowed to be here. Uh, your comment is welcome. Uh, that doesn't mean we begin the public comment portion of a public hearing on the evening that it opens.
So am I allowed to speak?
We're not going to get to public uh comment.
When that might be.
We've all been brought here under the same circumstances.
I I apologize.
Reading what it says, what you said to me.
As we are allowed to speak today.
Not say you're allowed tonight. If you want to read again, you'll see that it does not say you're allowed to speak this evening. It says the public hearing begins this evening. The public hearing began this evening, and it appears that we will get to public comment uh at next week's meeting.
Next week?
Assuming, assuming we can.
I'll do my best. I understand you guys are under tight.
Your, your uh traffic study is in the public record, has been submitted, so I would encourage you to make this uh a. Presentation on that, so we.
You will be, I promise you that.
And then I can appear on. I don't anticipate a long presentation, by the way, but.
We can hold that, uh, we can continue that public hearing.
Mister Chair, if I could also make the comment to the public, if you would like to submit email comments and writing. You're welcome to do that while the public hearing is open. you're welcome to do that while the public hearing is open. Um, so you could just send that
How do I know when the public hearing is?
The public hearing is already open.
Public
So you can
Public hearing is open. You're, you're free to submit uh written testimony.
I'm, I'm, when can I speak?
Speak likely next week. The public comment will begin as soon as the applicant, the applicant's initial presentation is done.
But I'm here now.
I understand.
And we are discussing this now. And that's what we received this letter. How about I don't, I can't be here next week?
Well, I encourage you to submit.
So why am I not allowed as a taxpayer to speak right now?
Cause the public comment period hasn't started yet.
But that's not what this letter says.
Letter says, I I don't have the letter in front of me. The public hearing began tonight.
Correct. You're correct. That's what it says.
Public hearing began tonight.
But if I cannot be here next week, then that's not, that's, you know, it it's, 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 how can you expect people who, who want to just speak? I'm not asking for more than that.
If you can join in person, you're also welcome to join remotely next week. Or, and if, uh, yeah, and we will be continuing the public hearing the following week. So if next week doesn't work, uh, the following week is an option also. And anytime between now and the close of public comment, which will happen before the first, you can submit comment and writing as well.
We wanna, we wanna hear what you say. It, there's a, this is a legal process. One group presents, another group, then the lawyers on the other side counter, and then the public comes, comes last. You get the
Then that needs to be stated clearly to the public. You will not have a public hearing. It will not happen until next week or whatever it says.
But but we can't say that it, that it's not gonna happen until next week because there was a possibility.
This is the public hearing. You're participating, actually
By public um comments.
No, but this is the public hearing right now. So this is all the beginning, the middle and the end of the process. The public goes last in that process. This is the public hearing.
So it could have been, I could have been heard today if things happened differently.
The applicant
Hearing and you could hear the public's comments depending on the length.
The applicant included their presentation.
I think the chairman spoke. The chairman has spoken.
Yeah, we're not gonna continue a back and forth, but the, the last thing I'll say is, if, yes. This is the way that this process unfolds. There's an initial presentation by the applicant. Once that's concluded, the public comment period uh opens and then the uh, then the applicant gets a rebuttal. That doesn't always happen on the same night.
I ask it like a bird's eye view question.
Please.
Is this, is this being taken in consideration with the other three projects that are up in that area?
Every project, every project
Each one's individual.
Projects are weighed uh individually to the extent that evidence draws ev- evidence that's in the record draws from those projects, that can be considered. But projects are uh, are
How each of them relates to that whole area and intersection?
We can have, I think, I'm sure, uh, Ms. Harrigan
Through each, I mean, the whole context.
But
It's not each one individually. It's the cumulative effect of all of them.
You're, you're, during your, once we get to public comment, you're welcome to, to speak on how this fits into that context, but uh we are deciding on this public right now. That will uh conclude, uh
Very much.
You know, we, we're not concluding public com, public hearing. Uh, we're continuing it to next week, but um, and then adjourning.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.